Better yet, if you have a smart parking app. And here's the big secret, it's the same as the Park Boston app. So you can download Park Boston and then use the same app to pay for meters here in Brookline and in Boston. It's pretty cool. I downloaded it earlier this week. I haven't used it yet, but it's on my phone, so I won't have to fish for quarters anymore. And I think many communities have had this for a while, I know. I used to travel to Washington DC a lot, and they had this 10 years ago. And I've been wondering for the last 10 years why we haven't done it. But we're finally there. Not all the meters have these stickers yet. I think over the next week or two, we'll be getting to all the meters. And the way it works is you open the app, and then it'll say, "What zone are you in?" And all of Brookline is the same zone, and it's 2445, which is...
Marked on the meter.
And it's marked on the meter. And then it'll ask you, "What's your meter number?" And that 2 is marked on the meter. You punch in the meter number, and then you say, "How long are you gonna park there?" And then magically, your credit card gets charged. It's funny how that works. And everything's hunky-dory. The meter will not show any time, but the parking enforcement folks will check the passport app to make sure that you've paid, even if the meter doesn't have time. So I think we're now in the 21st century with respect to parking. Selectman Franco.
So I was asked to make an announcement about an event that Joe Kennedy's doing here in Brookline. It's not for a few months now, but I think the objective is to get the word out early and often. So Congressman Kennedy, who's our congressman here in Brookline, is gonna be doing an event, a question and answer session at the Coolidge Corner Theater on the morning of June 2nd. It's an 8:00 AM start, and tickets first come, first served. This event, this question and answer session, is being sponsored by a number of organizations in town, the Chamber of Commerce, the League of Women Voters, and the town itself. There is a small cost for tickets. I believe it's $5. $10 at the door. And for additional information, visit BrooklineChamber.com. Again, this isn't for a few months now. It's June 2nd, 8:00 AM. But a good opportunity to talk to our congressman and weigh in on issues that may be before him, and certainly of concern to residents.
Anyone else have any announcements?
Yes, I'd like to just tell you about the schedule for the high school, Brookline High School Expansion Advisory Committee. We're meeting tomorrow night to think about and review the options that we have on the table, including a new one. And we will cogitate and discuss. And in two weeks, on April the 26th, I believe it is, a Wednesday, we will have a public hearing, at which time, members of the public, we will have released the information, and members of the public can weigh in. Then we will continue to think and discuss. And on May the 3rd, we will have another meeting, at which we make our recommendation. Our recommendation would be to this board, and to the Board of Selectmen, and to the Building Commission. So that's the schedule that we've laid out.
Cogitate.
Yep, a lot of cogitating.
And I noticed, I looked at the agenda, and there's going to be a new fourth option tomorrow.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. That should be an interesting meeting.
So we'll have a lot of cogitating to do.
Right. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we have Mr. Conquest signed up for public comment. Come join us. Five minutes.
Arthur Conquest, 115 Tappan Street. I'm gonna say, it was about a year ago, I lived one block, or one and a half blocks, north of the high school. I'm behind the high school, where Blake and Tappin intersect. And maybe it was a year ago, I'm not sure exactly, but it was more than eight months ago, a sign appeared almost in front of my front door, and it said, "Brookline High School Buffer Zone. No smoking on public property within 400 feet of school grounds." Shortly thereafter, I saw the first student arrive at about 11 o'clock in the morning with a cigarette in his hand, smoking in front of my house. I walked outside, and I said to him, "I can't stop you from smoking here, but please, when you finish your cigarette, put it in your pocket and take it away."
Wow.
This is what is deposited. This was September through December, right in front of the grassy area between the street and the sidewalk in front of my house. And I went to the trouble of picking up the butts to show you. And I brought this to the school committee about a week ago, and said, "Tell me what you'd like me to do. I'm not gonna continue to pick up the butts." And I think that, you know, I pretty much take care of my property. And if you really wanna see something horrific, go to the area between Cypress Field and the playground, where the 400 feet goes in the other direction. Does everybody know what I'm talking about? Okay? It's horrendous. It's an unintended consequence, but, you know, you're just making it into a trash heap with cigarette butts. It's horrible. But this is my own personal property, and I would, something, talk to someone from the school committee about what has to happen. I don't care if you put a nice cigarette container there or something, but you can't continue to allow the cigarettes to get dumped with packs of cigarettes, empty cigarette packs, right in front of my house.
I'm wondering what, I wonder what we can do.
Maybe extend the buffer.
That just pushes it out.
Yeah, but it also, it also doesn't give kids time to smoke.
But it sounds like the buffer sign is right on his property, as opposed to on the street curb.
It is on the street curb. It's on the, yeah, that 15 inches of grass. It's my property, the sidewalk, and then that...
You know, the inelegant solution would be to put a receptacle there.
Yeah, that just, to me, that encourages smoking, although they're obviously doing it now, so that's, I can understand why you're offended by it. I would be too.
Okay, and then, you know, the spring is coming. So I've noticed just in the last two weeks, more cigarette butts. There was a hole during the winter, but now they've...
Do they hang out at the buffer, waiting for the cigarette? You know, do the cigarette thing? And so they'll hit the buffers, they know they're coming in, they see the sign, they hang out, doing...
And they smoke?
Yeah.
Okay, and...
And then they drop it?
Absolutely.
That's not right, on your property. That's, I wonder, okay.
I'll take it up to Health and School Department and see what we can do.
Thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Interesting.
I empathize with Mr. Conquest.
Yeah.
He lives on a corner. And the garbage and other stuff, worse than cigarette butts, that would end up on our property. It was disgusting, so...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Mr. Nangle, would you like to speak?
I will.
Okay. Come join us.
Thank you.
Five minutes.
I won't need that long, but thank you. I decided to make a records request on a rumored letter by John Sills, a respected former Brookline educator, who went on to become superintendent of the Bedford Public Schools. John Sills lost out in a three-way contest for Brookline Superintendent last year, after the town paid a consultant to conduct a national search. His letter was received by each member of the school committee on March 14 of last year. It has never been discussed publicly, yet it is a public document. And it reads as follows, "Chairperson Ditko and school committee members, I am withdrawing my candidacy for the superintendency in Brookline. It is inconceivable to me that Jim H. could have gotten it wrong when he called me Thursday morning to tell me that the school committee had chosen Mr. Bott, and that all that remained was the contract negotiation. Your call two days later to inform me that the process was not actually over certainly took me by surprise, and I urge you to share the same message with the public, since the public continues to believe that the decision has been made. You responded by sending me the email that went to staff on Friday, as if its literal interpretation contradicts what is generally understood, and has once again been confirmed by yesterday's Globe West article. Whether duplicitous or dysfunctional, I find the result reprehensibly disrespectful to me personally, and to Brookline's educators and families generally. I would have loved nothing more than to have served the Brookline Public Schools, particularly in this time of crisis, but I am too troubled by the process to participate further. The six 1-2 vote for a candidate with no superintendent experience, in the face of historically low teacher morale, paralyzed contract negotiations, critical overcrowding, and disturbing racial division, tells me that the committee's values and perceptions about Brookline's needs are fundamentally different from my own. The holding of the two-hour school committee deliberation at a specially scheduled morning meeting, rather than at a publicly accessible evening session, further speaks to a lack of transparency that makes the rumors about the Bridge Span Group's prior relationship with Mr. Bott via the Citizen Schools all the more disturbing. Sincerely, John Sills, Superintendent Bedford Public Schools." I would just like to add that the town needs to investigate what was behind the phone call to John Sills. Why did the superintendent hiring suddenly become delayed? What were the issues at play? Why did the school committee do all of this under the cover of darkness? We need the light to shine on the truth. Did the town spend money on a national search, and conduct an expensive and time-consuming, and ultimately fraudulent dog and pony show, when the candidate had already been decided on by the only person on the school committee who really matters, the chair? There apparently was an issue with Andrew Bott, but this is not about what Andrew did or didn't do. It's about the fact that the school committee spent two weeks trying to scrub the deck and cover up because they wanted Andrew Bott to become superintendent so bad they could taste it. Thanks, and I have copies for you.
Okay, back to our calendar. Minutes for April 4th. Anyone have any changes, additions? I'm good. So I'll move that we accept the minutes of April 4th. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And I'll note for the record that Selectman Daly is away. She had a conflict tonight, so she won't be joining us. We have two disclosures of... We have, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. We have a couple of, we have a donation in the amount of $1,000 to the Brookline Commission for the Arts, to provide funding for the poet laureate. Mr. Faison.
Good evening. Austin Faison, Assistant Town Administrator. This is a $1,000 check from Friends of the Brookline Public Library. They've made these types of donations previously for the poet laureate program, and in this case, it's $1,000.
Okay, any questions? I'll thank the Friends of the Brookline Public Library for making this donation. It's important that volunteer groups and individuals step up and help us with these kinds of things. I'll move that we accept the donation of $1,000, the Brookline Commission for the Arts, to provide funding for the poet laureate program. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
The next item is a question of accepting a grant in the amount of $20,460 through the federal fiscal year 2016 Emergency Management Performance Grant program, to be used for the Brookline Emergency Management Team. Chief O'Leary.
Good evening. We had the opportunity, as we do, as we have for the past several years, to apply for funds under this program. The state sets the amount of funds that we can apply for. In this case, it was $20,460, and we have a group of items that they pre-authorize, any community that applies for this, to seek out, to see if they can use. As an emergency management team, you know, we're made up with a lot of department heads from various agencies in town, and we put it out to everybody to see what we could spend this money on. The vote was for the majority of the money, about $15,000, to get additional personal protective equipment for the police officers. These are heavier body armor that will go into the trunks. They're interchangeable between offices, it's not specifically fitted, but if they get involved in a situation, it's gonna give them a little bit more protection. All of our frontline cars will have those installed in the trunks to be available in case something bad happens. The rest of the money will be to help the Emergency Operations Center. It'll be a solar-powered battery unit to make sure that cell phones and laptops can operate for an extended period of time. And then there's some directional devices that we're getting, in case there's an emergency out on the street. So the total comes to $20,460.
Any questions? Okay. I will move that we accept the grant in the amount of $20,460 through the federal fiscal year 2016 Emergency Management Performance Grant, to be used for the Brookline Emergency Management Team. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to the disclosures. The first one is a disclosure from Lauren Bernard, who was an appointed member of the Coolidge Corner Study Committee. She lives next to one of the properties that the group is studying, and is filing a disclosure of her financial interest in the house that she, condo that she lives in. She's been a valued member of the committee. I don't, I personally don't see a problem here, but just to be full disclosure, filing this disclosure form is required.
It's more than that.
Okay.
You, as a board, must determine that if she wants to continue on the committee and act on the committee, as opposed to always recuse herself from that. You can make a determination that her financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services, which we can expect from her. So she is asking, I believe, for your determination to allow her to act on the committee. Otherwise, she would, every time this particular property came up, would have to recuse herself.
So I'm comfortable saying that she, giving her dispensation for two reasons. One, I think it's critically important that we have an abutment with a voice on this committee, as it's gonna make a recommendation about what is appropriate development in this location. And secondly, Ms. Bernard is not the only member of the committee. She's one voice on a committee of, I believe, 16, 17?
Something like that, yeah.
And while she's a valued voice, she is not the only voice. And beyond the step that, beyond the committee making recommendation, of which she's only one vote, any change would have to go through town meeting. So there's a few steps that would need to be fulfilled before any legal land use change could take effect.
I made agreement with Selectman Franco. Ms. Bernard is a town meeting member of Precinct 8, and as such, she also represents Precinct 8 on this committee. And, you know, it's very important to have her, the abutment's viewpoints. She also, I don't think that the nature of this financial interest is significantly impacted by her participation, so I would say that we should allow it.
I agree.
Okay, so I will move, so what's the motion?
You should move that the Board of Selectmen has determined the financial interest, Ms. Bernard's financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services, which the town can expect from her.
Okay, that's the motion. All those in favor, please say ayes. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next one up is Mark Zerillo.
Mr. Chairman, in this case, Mr. Zerillo is seeking to contract with the town for a particular study that the planning board, of which he's a member, is involved. So it's a little different, but similar issues, I guess.
So Mr. Zerillo is here, so I guess he can answer any questions we might have. My first question is, you would expect, for all matters relating to this contract, as a member of the planning board, you would recuse yourself?
Yes.
And not be involved in any of the deliberations regarding this contract, or...
That's correct.
...any of the output of this contract?
That's correct, right. And it is, it is an open bid. So the RFP in question is for Strategic Asset Plan and Major Parcel Study, and it's numbered P-17-22, for the record. And as a special municipal employee, which is an employee that is appointed but not paid, I need to...
In other words, a volunteer.
Yes. I need to appraise the body that put me originally on a planning board, which is the Board of Selectmen, of my interest in doing this particular project. As I mentioned, it's gonna be advertised, so I don't have the project, I haven't won the project, but the project, the RFP, is due to be submitted on the 25th of April. So it's timely that I would ask you if you thought that my involvement in the project was reasonable, and as a result, then I could go ahead and submit on the project.
Would you envision that you yourself are gonna be doing the work, or is it simply your firm that's bidding on it?
No, it would be myself. I have, I guess you'd call it semi-retired from my day job, which was for, with Sims Manium Key Associates, and previously, I had worked with the Architects Collaborative. And I had participated in many planning projects, many different types and so forth. And I've been on a planning board for 20 years. It's gonna be 20 years this September.
Really?
My, my, the time flies. It's sort of like, you know, you take a busman's holiday, and, you know, I really enjoy the planning board. But the idea is that I started a small, doing consultancy services, because I'm a planner, certified planner, and a certified or registered landscape architect. And so I started this business two years ago, when I left Sims Manium Key Associates. So I could be hired either as personally, or as this little firm that I have, as a consultant service firm. It depends on what is the most ethical way to deal with the contract. And I believe that it would be that I would contact directly with the town, personally.
I have, I hate to say it, because I know you're a very capable guy, and it's been, you know, you have a lot of experience, and I'm sure that, you know, we get a great plan, asset study, but I do have a, I do have a problem with it. I think that there's an appearance of a conflict, which, you know, I think is almost as significant as whether there really is one. I mean, I think, in fact, there is, and it's very hard to have one rule for one person and another rule for another person in this kind of situation. And it seems to me that we ought to not, we always ask people who are applying for these various positions, or in the same field, are they going to be applying? They know that they cannot apply for work at Brookline, and they all say yes. So I think that's the standard we need to set, and we need to follow. So as much as I regret having to, you know, to vote that way, I will, I will vote that we should not have you do this. Be happy to recommend you to other towns, and, but I think that in Brookline, it's not a good idea.
Has this come up before?
I'm not specifically aware of such a request before, in my tenure.
Who's going to be selecting the vendor?
There's a committee. I'm on the committee. There's a, there is a planning, it's myself, Betsy DeWitt, Carla Banka, Bob Cook from the planning board.
But who will actually sign the contract?
I guess that would be David.
But who would authorize the signature? Is it, is it coming back to this board to approve the contract?
I presume, yeah.
I think it's you.
Yeah, we're signing.
Not me, but us.
Yeah, you.
Collectively, this board does.
I'm, yeah, I recognize the unusual nature, and I recognize there's, there's a conflict, but I, I think, you know, the question we normally ask of planning board members, when they come before us, and Mr. Zerillo has been on there before this board, before anyone on this board was on the planning board, really typically relates to getting commissions, you know, working on town projects.
Of which this is one.
You know, working on private projects for the town that the planning board has jurisdiction over. So, you know, this is a contract that, it's being supervised by the planning board, but it has a broader context.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
May I speak?
Sure, sure. By all means.
Just, I mean, as I mentioned, I've been on a planning board for quite some time, and I've worked for larger firms, which did do work that typically we would go after, that Brookline would offer, but never did. Why is this different? It's different because what I thought, and seriously, I can abide by any decision that the board makes, but I just thought that being on the board for 20 years, and roughly, I talked to Polly Selko, and roughly heard over 2,000... I talked to Polly Selko, and roughly heard over 2,000 cases, have been involved in many studies and many CIP discussions with regard to space need and space use, and having witnessed the recent planning studies that have occurred in town related to selection of sites for various uses and so forth, don't have to name any of those. I just thought that my experience might be useful in terms of being able to provide in this strategic asset plan, a way, a better understanding, I'd say, of how, what the town's needs are, and how the planning board worked, and how the planning department, and what the need was in the planning department. This particular RFP was, I guess you should call it advertised last year or the year before, and there were no takers on the RFP. One of the reasons could have been that it was a very small amount of money related to the potential of, or the need for doing the work. And so it was combined, I understand it was combined with a major parcel study to make it more attractive for respective bidders. So the only reason, besides that I did this for 46 years professionally, I would like to be able to submit on the project, is that I believe I could really give a service to the town. And if I was selected, and if I worked as a special municipal employee, it could even be in the capacity as, you know, as part of the planning department. So, you know, I'm willing to abide by any decision that the board makes, and I certainly understand Ms. Heller's position. It's perfectly right. And that's one of the reasons why I'm here, to make sure that, you know, I don't do this behind anybody's back, or somebody just realizes that so-and-so is doing this and what's happening. So if it's something that the board thinks would be beneficial, then I could help. If not, then not. So I appreciate your time.
So this would, in effect, if we vote, it would allow him to bid on the job and compete?
Oh, I see.
And compete. And then, if he gets the contract, you know, get paid.
Well, I think the thing that, when I heard you mention it earlier, is that I think you should contemplate, you know, if Mr. Zerillo is successful, gets the job, will there be any limitations or conditions on his service as a planning board member? And I think I've heard that he would recuse himself when the planning board talks about matters that were the subject of the study. So I think if, to me, that's going to happen, so I think Mr. Zerillo should be aware of that, or you should be, I want to make sure that you're, that's consistent with what you-
Right.
Because there's two steps to this. One is to seek the contract, and the other is to serve in the planning board while the contract is, while the study, the completed study is completed.
That's interesting. It's a 12-week study. So if it was, you know, if it was necessary to recuse myself for 12 weeks from the planning board, I could do that. I mean, there are-
Well, recuse yourself with respect to this matter, these matters.
Yeah, exactly.
I was thinking, Mark, more of the, so you've finished your study in 12 weeks, you submit it as a finished product, and then for the next many months and potentially years, the planning board might be considering aspects of-
Oh, I see.
-the study that you personally have recommended. So I'm thinking that that would present some, not a financial conflict, I don't think, but a conflict where-
An operational-
Where one of the members-
It's a little messy.
But he's willing, I guess, to recuse himself, and then I think the question is, is that going to affect his service on the planning board so much that what's, why is it worth it?
Isn't there also an issue of, because of his position on the planning board, whatever the committee is that selects the vendor is going to have a preference for someone they know. And that's where the perception comes in, I think.
It's the appearance.
Right.
Yeah. Heller, I mentioned. I think the other issue is, you know, what type of precedent does this set in situations where it's not so, you know, clear that, you know, the person would be very beneficial to the town? And I think that's probably the more important thing for us to think about.
So as somebody that manages a lot of consultants in my day job, let me check through the list of why I frequently make an argument to go outside of my shop, to seek outside expertise. One is resource limitation, right? You don't have the particular set of skills, or the existing resource doesn't have the bandwidth to fulfill the job, right? There's an argument for going outside for creative thinking. You want a little bit of a fresh perspective. And then three, you want an outside view, you want some credibility, somebody that's not ingrained in the system, that can come in and deliver, in some cases, undesirable news, sometimes news that just doesn't, is going to spark a whole change in thinking about how the organization runs. I think Mr. Zerillo has accurately articulated the fact that he brings a lot of knowledge about how Brookline runs, and what's practically possible and impossible, based on 20 years' worth of service on the planning board. As I articulated, I think there's another side to that, that you may not be getting fresh thinking, you may not be getting a perspective that would come with somebody who isn't ingrained in these issues, and wouldn't bring that new lens. And then there's the issue, which again, Mr. Zerillo brought up, about credibility. There's been other land use studies that people have said the fix was in, that everybody was pushing for a particular site to be selected, or outcome to be conceived, and that's something that this board just needs to acknowledge as we contemplate the question before us.
So I guess we'll take a vote and see how it goes. So I guess, or-
Is this something that, I don't need to pass the buck, but-
The buck stops here, Selectman Green?
The word stops here. Maybe we should go through, I don't know, Town Council? Anything that she could add?
Well, so this is a timely decision. As Mr. Zerillo said, the proposals are due in the span of another week, week and a half. So I think we need to make a decision.
You know, it's a judgment call. That's why we paid the big bucks, to make the hard decisions.
Let me just read the decision you have to make. So Section 20 of the Conflict of Interest Law says, "A municipal employee," which even though Mr. Zerillo is a volunteer member of the planning board, is considered a municipal employee in the law, who has a contract, you can't, basically, you cannot have a contract with the same employer, the same town, that you're an employee of, even though he's a member of the planning board, unless, and this is the case what Mr. Zerillo has done, "A special municipal employee files with the clerk city or town or district, a statement making full disclosure of his interests and the interest of his immediate family in the contract, and if the Board of Selectmen approves the exemption of his interest from this section." So you have to specifically approve an exemption which would allow him to contract with the city or town.
So would the motion be similar to what we did with Ms. Bernard?
No, it's not, really. It's all you have to, you know, it doesn't really say what, you have to make a specific determination. All it says is that you have to approve, it's only the selectman that can approve the exemption from this-
The question, I guess, is whether or not we're going to prove an exemption.
Okay. So can we propose conditions?
Yes, you could, of course.
So a possible condition could be, if we're so inclined, that Mr. Zerillo recuse himself as a member of the planning board with respect to any aspects of this study now and into the future. I don't know if that's the way to word it.
Isn't there another issue? We are voting to make an exception. And the issue of appearance of a conflict still exists, and that's what we have to make an exception around, that, you know, the appearance of a conflict, the fact that, you know, his friends and, you know, supporters on the committee are going to be awarding the contract, we have to make a determination that those things are, we're okay with those things, and therefore the exception, you know, is warranted. So I think, you know, we really do have to go through that piece of the thinking.
Yeah, and as I said before, I am troubled by it. I think that, as Selectman Franco has said, you know, some people will say, well, the fix is in, you know, and I also, you know, I'm also troubled by the precedent. So I will vote for no exception. That's just, you know, and absolutely nothing to do with Mr. Zerillo. You know, I appreciate all the hard work you've done, I know you've been a valuable member of the board, and it's nothing to do with you personally, but-
I appreciate that. No, I certainly understand.
Right.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to second that. I mean, it's not you, I think it just creates big problems in the future, potential big problems in the future for us if we do make an exception. And it's just potential, but I think we really have to, you know, look at that, you know, potential.
Okay. Well, I'll make the, I'll make the, I'll make the motion in the positive, and you can vote yea or nay, okay? So the motion is to grant-
Is to approve an exemption of Mr. Zerillo's interest from this section, meaning basically authorize him to contract with the town.
I think you can just read the last sentence in the approval of exemption. "We approve this exemption under Section 20D regarding the financial interest identified by the special municipal employee in this case."
Okay, so that's the, that's the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. If not, no. Selectman Franco.
No.
Selectman Heller.
No.
Selectman Green.
I'm afraid no.
And I'm going to vote no.
Thank you very much for your time.
And please don't take that personally.
Absolutely not. No, thanks very much. I really appreciate you taking this up and giving it due hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the next is a question of appointing a JFK 100 Celebration Committee to solicit donations and plan for the year-long JFK 100 Celebration Events in Brookline for the 100th Anniversary of John F. Kennedy's birth on May 29th, 2017. Selectman Heller.
Yes. This item is to establish a celebrations committee, much like we have a first light committee, to solicit donations. And we are having a, you should have gotten an email now, you may not have read it yet, gotten it this afternoon. We are having our fundraiser on May 18th. It's a very, it's very exciting, the pieces are really coming together, Thursday, May 18th, at the home of Nancy Gertner and John Reinstein. As you will probably remember, they live in the Second Kennedy Home, which is the one that John Kennedy was born at 83 Beals, and then they moved to 51 Abbotsford, and he was, as a child, and Robert Kennedy was actually born at 51. And there's a lot in Rose Kennedy's book about their life in that house. So Nancy and John have kindly offered, and they're part of our celebrations committee, the Honorable Nancy Gertner and John Reinstein, and they are assisting in the organizational efforts to get this going. The donations will be used for events, a lot of them are around May 29th, and we're going to have a birthday celebration. The National Park Service operates the site at 83 Beals, but they are not allowed to do, as a federal employees, they don't do any fundraising, and they are not also allowed to purchase any food. So this fundraising is for the purpose of supporting the activities on the 29th, not only at 83 Beals, but also the Memorial Day Parade, which will be enhanced this year because of John Kennedy's status as a veteran, and obviously, the town's most notable veteran. But also, we're hoping to raise enough funds to be able to do some events along later in the year, including things around the date of his assassination in November, but also earlier than that, the Park Service plans to keep the house open many more hours this year, so we are hoping to have some additional need. And it will really depend on how much we raise, but we need to establish a committee. It would be under the auspices of the town. We have partnered with the Brookline Community Foundation to accept credit card donations. And so that's basically the story.
And the folks, so-
The people on the committee are, as I said, Nancy Gertner, former federal judge, now connected to the Harvard Law School, and John Reinstein, a civil rights attorney, Jim Solomon, who is the chef-owner of the fireplace, and is a Kennedy buff himself. You may have seen his display of memorabilia, which is in the first floor, in the foyer in the town hall, and also his photographs on the wall in room, I think that's 111. Chobe Hoy, a well-known philanthropist in the town, and whose advice on fundraising is absolutely fantastic. And Betsy DeWitt, former selectman. And I want to give a particular shout-out to all of these people. They have just really been fantastic in terms of helping to put this together. Jim is going to provide the food at cost, and it will be Kennedy recipes, basically. He also just, as I, I think I mentioned to you last week, he's holding a month-long dine-like-a-Kennedy at the Fireplace Restaurant, so that should be a kind of fun thing to take your friends and family to. Betsy has been phenomenal. I could not, could not imagine doing this without her, really. She's just, she's very detail-oriented, but also understands the town and how everything works, and so I want to thank her, and Chobe, and everybody else. But at any rate, sorry to go on so long, but it is taking a lot of energy and time. So.
I've got one question and one statement masquerading as a question. Let me do the incognito.
Just a quick one, please.
I will do it quickly, I promise. We learned before the meeting that tonight is the last night to register if you wish to vote in the municipal election. I neglected to bring it up, so I just want to say publicly-
You got to speak that in.
If you want to vote, you got to, you got to register by 8 o'clock tonight. The real question is, I know you said that Parks, Park Service employees aren't allowed to fundraise. Are they unofficially on this committee, are they advising?
No, they're not, they're not. No. And I did forget to mention one other very important thing. Stephen Kennedy Smith, who is the nephew of JFK, and has just written a book about JFK's speeches. speeches, and he will be the invited guest, the speaker, at this event, so it's also doubly exciting for that reason. No, the Park Service is not, they know that, basically all they know is that we're doing it.
But there's some coordination on the programming, that would be enabled by this celebration committee? Or is it totally divorced?
No, it's divorced. They, you know, Steve Rothstein, who is the director of the Kennedy Foundation, the Library Foundation, which raises money on behalf of the library, has put us in touch with Steve Kennedy Smith, so we don't, you know, we're not, the Park Service is not involved. I mean, they know about it, and they're involved in arranging other events, and et cetera, but they're not involved in the, in the raising of money here.
Okay, can I move this one? Thank you. I'll move that we appoint a JFK 100 Celebration Committee to solicit donations and plan for the year-long JFK 100 Celebration Events in Brookline for the 100th Anniversary of JFK's birth on May 29th. And the folks we are appointing are Selectman Nancy Heller, the Honorable Nancy Gertner and John Reinstein, Jim Solomon, Chobi Hoy, and Betsy DeWitt. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, moving on to our main calendar, and we are running late. So, the first item is a question of authorizing the filling of a parking control officer vacancy in the Police Department. Chief O'Leary?
Yes, good evening again. We received notification that one of our longtime parking control officers, Marjorie Mello, is gonna retire at the end of this school year, which creates an opening in our full-time staff. I heard you speak earlier about the passport parking that's been phasing in right now, and these parking control officers are the ones that have the machines that'll be able to make sure the payments are made and enforcement is done, so I think it's critical that we staff up as much as we can. So, I'm looking to fill her, start the process to fill her position.
Any questions or comments?
Is that in the Traffic Division?
Yes, it'll be under the Parking Control Officers, this civilian staff. Whoever fills this position will double parking control, as well as school crossing post.
Okay, I'll move that we authorize the filling of the parking control officer vacancy in the Police Department. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Now, we're on, ah, don't go anywhere. We're on to your budget.
Okay, I can open up with a couple of things that we have. Before we now, first of all, we're asking that the Board approve appropriation of $16,829,005.
We don't approve it, we recommend.
Recommend, yes.
The town meeting approves it.
I misspoke. What that does, most of those funds are used to, for personnel costs and associated costs with the, our staff. Our staff is actually 179 full-time employees. That's made up of 136 one offices, 16 of our public safety dispatchers, the inside staff, which is about nine people, and the rest is the parking control and school crossing guards. That brings us the total of that 16-plus million dollars. This budget does provide for some capital. It will provide us to replace nine of our vehicles, to replace our two motorcycles that are up in years, but they still retain their value a little bit for good trade-ins at this point, and it also allows us to buy some batteries and associated equipment to keep our portable radios operational. I had worked extensively with the Selectman's Office on the budget, and I think that the budget is extremely fair, and allows us to continue providing public safety for the town. A couple of things that we have underway that I think will be of interest, and they are gonna trail into next year. We just implemented the next-generation 911 within our dispatch center. All of our dispatches have been trained in it. What that does is upgrades our mapping capabilities, upgrades where we can locate cell callers from in-town here, and it also allows for multiple radios on the display screens for the dispatches, and provides for a lot quicker gathering of information by the dispatches. As I said, all of them have been trained, all of our stations, the five of them, have been upgraded, and all that was run through the state as part of their E-911 operation. That training, everything else was covered by the state, there's no cost to the town on any of that. One thing that we are having a little bit of a hiccup with is based, back in the fall, we started discussions with the state to allow us to accept 911 calls, just the wireless calls that are made within the town. We signed agreements with them, we worked out a protocol with the City of Boston, Boston Police Department, and we were hoping to get approval to have the carriers switch over the, the signals to our dispatch center, so that anyone who makes a call, most people that make a call within the town of Brookline, we would receive the call at our public safety answering, answering location at the police station, and not have them get rerouted to Framingham. There is a little bit of a glitch in that, the policy in the state has changed, that they want to approve regional PSAPs first. However, we are in discussions with, with them to see if we can get back online and get that done. We're ready to accept them. I think all of the homework's been done on our part, and the carriers just have to be told to go ahead and make the switch.
Does Boston accept it?
Right now, I think the only communities in the state are Boston and Antucket. We would be the third. That was, as of the fall, we would have been the third that's ready to go. It's not gonna be foolproof in that we're not gonna get every call, because it's based on the locations of the cell towers, but we will get, I think it's over 80% of the calls within there, which we're getting basically zero of them right now.
So, if, if, if you're on an edge of town and the tower's in Boston, it'll get routed to Boston?
It will get routed to Boston. We worked out the protocol. They will have an automatic exchange back to us.
And they just hit the button, boom, it comes here?
Yes. There are a minimal amount that may still go to the state, minimal meaning, you know, here and there, but it does put us in a good position to when the technology gets, technology gets further upgraded, we will get close to 100% of the calls here in, at Brookline. Together with that, we're in the process of upgrading our CAD system. I know that the Board had approved money for a study. We just about wrapped up with the first phase, which is upgrading the computer AD dispatch as part of the next-gen 911, but it's gonna work on our Laramore computers, our Laramore records-keeping system, as well as the fire department's firehouse records-keeping system that they have. The second phase of that is in the planning process right now, and that's gonna upgrade all of our, our records-management system that we have. Many of the systems that we have in place now, they'll all be going to the next, next generation. We hope to get that underway. We have the funding for it through a grant from the state that the Board has approved several months ago, and we hope to have that underway very shortly. Within the next several months, I know I plan on coming back for the Board to authorize some hiring. We currently have nine vacant positions. They, we did have a new exam given statewide on March 25th that was given. We had 40 residents of the town apply for the test. Out of those 40 residents, 19 of them were either people of color or women, and the other are classified themselves as white males. There is a change, that there's gonna be a second test given in June, and that was because there was recent legislation that allowed candidates between the ages of 19 and 21 that weren't allowed to take that test. It just changed that will allow them now to be eligible to take the exam. We just got notified of this yesterday. We will be doing a social media outreach and outreach to our residents again, in case we can capture more people within that age group to take the test.
Excuse me, is, is this the civil service test, or are you talking about another test?
Civil service test. It's, it's gonna piggyback on the one that was given in March. It'll be the same one, I think it's gonna be the same one. They, they told us that the results will come out at the same time, so we'll have our list probably in early fall. The difference is, there was a law change that allowed 19 to 21 to take the test, but they still can't be hired until they reach 21 years of age. The last date of filing is May 23rd, with the new exam being, being given on June 24th. So, we're gonna start our efforts at outreach of that later this week. We are in the process of getting re-accredited. I know that the, that Selectman Green has our updates to our policies, and I know we have a meeting scheduled for the end of next week to go over where we stand on that. And I just do want to touch base on, on one program that we have expanded upon this year, and it's really to help our offices, it's, and our residents. It's an expansion of our critical incident team. As you know, we started out when we wanted to get our offices, 25% of our offices, trained in this extensive training on how to handle people that are suffering from mental illness and are in a, in a crisis. As of today, we have about 43%, 44% of our department trained. We will be doing another training session for not only the Brookline Department, but also seven area departments. That training will be taking place in May through a grant that we have, would become, would become a training site for them. But as an aside to that, we've also joined in a consortium of about nine cities and towns that surround us here, where each town has provided five offices to be specially trained on how to debrief people that go through some critical incidents, and we have already had our offices attend debriefing sessions in Chelsea and Cambridge, and the initial response that we get back is, is very positive to help not only the police officers, but also the responders, meaning the crime scene techs and, or the dispatchers, vent, and talk about the experience they had on a critical incident. So, that's something that we're doing to provide our offices to handle things a little bit better than they were able to handle it in the past. Those are a couple of the highlights I wanted to hit on, and I know that there's probably some questions from the Board, so.
So, the court systems, the State's Court Systems Capital Plan came out yesterday, I believe, in coordination with DCAM, the Department of Capital Asset Management. Despite some effort on my part, I was unable to find a copy of that capital plan, and I know in the past, Brookline District Court has been on the list. I'm wondering if you can give some update about the fate of, of our district court here in, in Brookline?
I can get you, I have a copy. I actually sent it, I sent it around to some people yesterday in our building. The thing that concerned me a little bit was that it said that they were gonna reduce from 93 courts to 75 courts. I don't know if Brookline is on the list. I know that last week, we had, over the last couple of weeks, we've had discussions with the court, the judges, and our court, and also the, the chief, the chief justice of the, the court system on retaining juveniles in Brookline, expanding upon some of the diversion that we do with our juveniles, and I know it's been well-received, and as far as I know, that we've been given the go-ahead to work with the court to expand upon that. So, I would take that as a good sign, that Brookline is not, I know that there's no names mentioned in that report as to which ones are on the chopping block, but at least initially, we've been given the okay to work with the court to expand what we're doing, and I think that that probably puts us in some pretty good position going forward.
Yeah, I know the juvenile, suite of juvenile programs, I think, have been well-received. The other thing I remember from several years ago, when we last had this in-depth conversation, is if the district court were to close, we would be on the hook for some transportation costs to likely Brighton District Court, which would clearly have funding implications for us, so I think it's, it does, despite the fact the question may not seem to fit into the context of a budget, it's something we should be mindful of going forward.
Just an aside to that, Brighton Court has some issues with its, I think it's mold, so they're gonna have, we're gonna be taking some of their court loads here in Brookline while they undergo construction.
Selectman Heller?
But if, it's all speculation, I suppose, at this point, but would we have to stick to Norfolk County in order to, and use Norfolk, a facility located in Norfolk County for our cases? I mean, it's part of the county system, and we pay for it, and...
Well, when we've, the discussions over the past, when they threatened to close the courts, it's been told that we're gonna go to Newton, we're gonna go to Brighton, or we're gonna go to Dedham. I don't think that it ever got fully resolved we would go, other than the fact that we would travel outside of Brookline. So, I don't even think that has been resolved.
I have an impression.
Sure.
So, several months ago, some citizens of the town came forward and, to talk about the very serious incident with a dog, and I'm sure that you remember it well, as we all do, and it was very serious. And at that time, the, the dog control officer was, I believe, away on vacation, and was being, was, another officer came in his place, and one of the issues that I recall was that that officer didn't, didn't feel he could, he knew how to deal with this particularly serious issue. So, I'm wondering, you've described in here your program that one officer functions as the control, animal control officer. He works five days a week, he, you know, dogs don't pay attention to the calendar, they don't know what time it is when they decide to bite somebody. So, the question is, you know, how much, have you implemented any kind of different system of training, you know, certain number of people who could be available when the control, when the animal control officer is not, and who have more training and more knowledge about?
Since, since that time, we have redone our policy on it. The policy's been expanded. All offices have been trained in the policy as of a month ago. Part of that policy, we entered into agreements with the outside agencies to come in and assist if the dog officer is unavailable. The committee, that, the moderators committee that got set up, that is underway as well, and I, I think that we did not provide specific advanced training for offices, you know, whether it's another four or five officers. We did department-wide training in the policy, what their expectations are, and the fact that they can, we have agreements with other agencies that can come in to assist us now.
Yeah, let me just add, it's the Selectments Committee that's addressing the training issues. There's another committee, the Moderators Committee, that's looking at issues of posting of, of police reports, but the Selectment Committee, Selectments Committee of which I'm chair, is looking at these issues and will be coming out with some recommendations with respect to some of the issues that you've raised. But the special order that the chief mentioned, you know, goes a long ways towards addressing a lot of the issues that the, that Mr. Jones raised in his warrant article.
That's the bat phone.
Sorry. I usually turn it down, I don't know why I do.
Any other questions? This is a big budget, and we're, we're short of time, so we're kinda not doing it the full justice.
I have a question, and maybe it's not worthy of this discussion. So, I look here, you have, oh, that's, I won't ask that question. So I look here, you have, I won't ask that question. In terms of prisoner food or feeding, it seems like an awful small amount. How many prisoners are you talking about?
Last year, we had 460-something prisoners over the year. We will not feed them if they make bail. We usually don't feed them when court's in session because they get brought over to court. So I don't know the exact number of meals that we bring in, but we do have contracts with a place for breakfast, a place for lunch and dinner, and lunch and dinner is the same one.
I didn't realize it was that small amount.
Our arrest of it going down as our crime's been going down. As you know, last year was the lowest crime rate we've had, like 25, 26% less than the year before. And that's reflected in a reduction in arrests as well.
Sorry, one other, one of my favorite topics is the issue of noise by law and how that...
And to their students. And they work, we work pretty good with them, that if we have an issue with a party of, you know, certain schools, they will call the kids in on Monday and have them accountable for what they did. So all of that well-rounded effort has reduced the complaints in North Brookline, which has been pretty good.
Selectman Franco?
I have a question about what I think is probably a typo in the budget, but field interrogations, there's a large drop-off in the number of reported investigations that took place over the past few years. So in 2015, the performance indicators indicate that there were just over 2,000 field interrogations that took place. In 2016, it's reported that there were 37 actual, and then it's estimated in 2017 that there'll be 1,800, and then the 2018 estimate is 45. So is that, is there a typo there, or is there some change in the way things are categorized?
Both, that 1,800 shouldn't have been in there.
Okay.
But there is a major change that we did. Based on our ability to divide up why we are retaining people's names, and the fact that a field interrogation is when you make a stop of a subject on the street that's under some reasonable suspicion that they have been or is about to, or can be, did commit a crime, we decided to break up how we store them in our computer system. Prior to 2016, it used to be that everybody that we retained a name from, whether it was somebody, we'd go to an alarm call, and there'd be somebody in the house, and we'd make sure, we'd hold on to it to make sure that the people were legit. They would all go into one computer database, and we would call it that database. In 2015, we decided to break that up, 2016. So our policy is now that if we stop somebody, an officer that stops somebody on the street has to do a report, has to say why they got stopped. That report goes into a sergeant, sergeant makes the review, the sergeant decides it either goes into a name database that is only, that gets purged, or it goes into the field interrogation database. That's why you're seeing the lower numbers now compared to what they were.
Okay, we receive periodic reports on the crime rate from the chief, so, and we're running about 30 minutes behind, so any other questions?
30 minutes behind, no.
Okay. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. School Department, and we're...
Oh, can I ask one question? Could you correct the numbers in the field interrogation column there for us? Because I think that's, I mean, if 1,800 is not supposed to be there, I'd like to know what.
I'll talk to Melissa and we've got to change.
Okay.
And just, we are running 30 minutes behind, so. And this is the biggest budget in town.
Which we got two days ago.
But of course, Town Meeting just has the authority to allocate the money, not...
No, I understand, but I think that a little more time to review. This one-inch-thick document would be useful.
One inch?
An inch and a half.
We're going to walk you through the school committee's 2017-18 budget request, and... So I think first and foremost, it's important to share that this budget, the FY18 budget's designed to accomplish three major goals. One is to stabilize the district after two years of exceptional growth, in particular staffing and resources that were provided by voters in Brookline through the override. It has allowed the district to provide the staffing that matches the necessary staffing that goes along with all of the classrooms that have been added for 10 years. And this budget really is important in that it stabilizes, the district maintains that so that we can fully implement the vision that was behind what voters approved through the 2015 override. So you do not see a significant number of new programs, expenditures, initiatives, or new staff in this budget. What growth you do see in this budget is due to the continued enrollment growth throughout the public schools. And third, and equally important, this budget's designed to continue the work of aligning our practices, our programs, our policies, and our system so that we are better supporting all of our students. And of course, the top priority is always, is to remain an excellent educational system and provide that excellent education for all students. We're pursuing, through this budget, and for many years prior through this budget and going forward, we're pursuing four major goals, and there's much work to be done to fulfill these promises. Most importantly, equitable outcomes for all students. So this is, it's about starting with equitable access for programming, but much more importantly, it's what are the equitable outcomes so that all students have the equal opportunity to achieve at the end of their education, that the outcomes are equitably achieved by all students. Efficient operations of the systems, district-wide and in each of our schools. Very ambitious, on-time and on-budget capital projects, and then detailed analysis planning and budgeting for our future growth. I spoke to these, I just want to highlight again, under equitable outcomes, in this coming year, we're going to focus on evaluating the effectiveness of our work in teaching and learning for all of our students, understanding where are our gaps, why we have those gaps, and understanding how we can close those gaps. Strengthening instruction, in particular, by supporting our principals, so that our principals can support teachers and our teachers can support students, creating more opportunities for collaboration across the district and strengthening instruction. And then again, improving systems, so working with principals to efficiently schedule and operationalize our schools, and ensuring that our central office supports, in particular HR, going forward. And over the past several years, as you know, worked for, with IT and the juncture between town and school IT departments, so that we are effectively providing supports across all of our schools. Again, driving this is our core values, our dramatic growth, and the commitments made in the 2015 operating override. And just another way to look at the core values of our schools. And so just to highlight for you, as you see, Mary Ellen will speak about numbers in just a moment, but just as a refresher, this is the enrollment, these are the enrollment trends in Brookline from September 1977, projected through September 2026. Where the blue line ends this current school year, you see two lines going forward. The bottom line, green on this projection, is the enrollment projection outside of new development. And the larger gray line is new development, and these are the known filed new developments, not rumored new developments, these are ones that have been filed with the town. And you can see that as a total enrollment, the new developments will, you know, enrollment will continue to grow either way, and when several of the anticipated new developments come online, you would see an additional jump spike in enrollment numbers. These are the numbers for our K through eights, and you see in the gray bar at the end, a very important caveat, that is a period of time for which children have not yet been born. And so it starts with a projected number of 630 births, and then there's a natural attrition rate. It's not actually based at that point on actual births, again, because the children at that year have not yet been born. And the idea behind the enrollment report is each year to update it. Mary Ellen has been working very closely with the town clerk's office and looking at ways where we can partner very effectively around census data and other means of gathering information so that we can annually update this report and continue moving that projection accurately out forward, based on real children who are born, not a theoretical number of 630 at that point. And then the high school, again, in the outlying years, that gray bar farther out on this graph, that is the year for which children are not yet born for ninth grade. Right before that, you see a drop. That is when our current kindergarten arrives at BHS. This is, we believe, an anomalous year in our kindergarten enrollment, lower than projected, which is expected during a major construction project. When you typically in schools see a drop in enrollment when there is a large construction project going on, specifically the devotion project in this case. And these are numbers that you know well, anticipating out through 2021, increase by 2021 of another 335 students over our current enrollment. And what got muddied there at the bottom is that we currently have very few classes that are over the average class size range of 18 to 21. That number continues to go up because, in outlying years, significantly because we are out of space. The building department has done remarkable work over the last 10 years of adding capacity for 1,400 students in our existing eight buildings, but there's no more capacity to do that. And as you know, we are renting a lot of property for both the BEET programs and for Pierce School, and this, that additional capacity would have to be, outside of the ninth school project, would have to be absorbed into existing classrooms. And so this, I'm going to turn over to Mary Ellen to talk about the numbers.
So as you see, we have an additional line item request as part of our, as part of the school or education request for the town, which is vocational, educational, technical program, tuition and transportation. The memo is provided to the board members to explain sort of that accounting change. I want to point out that the amount of that need for setting up that line item is coming out of the town-school partnership allocation for education. So we have removed those expenses from the school department budget to fund this line item. They just have been improperly charged to the school department budget, and so there's no negative impact in terms of the revenue allocation that was set out earlier this budget season. The way that our budget breaks down is we have our general fund appropriation for revenue of $104,800,000. We're supporting the budget additionally with tuition and fees, it's materials fee, students as well as one or two F1 visa students at the high school. That's increasing because the school committee is voting a 3% increase to the materials fee. Rental facilities is staying the same. Circuit Breaker is being funded with an additional $532,000, primarily because one of the changes that's being made is that due to the number of in-district programs that we have in the district, we have not been claiming for those in-district costs, and many of those students in the sub-separate classrooms are eligible for costs. In my prior district, that was just under $1 million. We have just as many students here, so traditionally, this line has been $1,606,000. The FY17 budget was funded with residual balances in the Circuit Breaker account. This year's Circuit Breaker is actually a split of prior, the last of the prior year reserve plus about $500,000 estimated for new funding. But I anticipate, based on the Circuit Breaker filing, that Brookline should be able to receive 2.7 or higher in our reimbursement claim. The revolving fund reimbursement and other revenue has also remained the same. There are no changes to that, and as you can see in terms of the revenue, we're taking out the transfer to the Voc Tech Tuition and Transportation. So our budget breaks down to, as many of you realize and know, is that the majority of a school department is in personnel, so the majority of our expenses are also in personnel at $94 million. This reflects the recent settlement of all of our six contracts, and the continuation of that, as well as additional supports in our paraprofessional contract for operationalizing our school. And essentially, that means we are looking at additional hours for those employees to cover a longer workday than the school day. And again, I'm going to go breeze through the rest of the detail. You have it in front of you, is basically, this is how we are, what new staff we're adding, and I'd like to add that all of it is in teaching staffs. These are positions that were added this year, that were unfunded, that we declare as part of the new budget process as new positions, since they were not part of the budget deliberations as part of FY17. And then new requests, this is basically all enrollment, all teachers of 20 FTEs. We are not funding for, we're keeping for FTEs for special education, but we're not funding those. We anticipate that turnover will support and fund those. And we, those positions are not specifically identified yet, and they're generally reserved for move-ins in September and October, and to attend to those truly unknown students that arrive. This is how our services break down. A number of what we've been doing and what was forecasted as part of last year's budget is realigning where expenses are charged and how expensive, what category they belong to. So much of this is actually transfers in and among line items. One of the major departments that we realigned was the IT department and the EdTech department. IT is supported by Kevin Stokes and the Help Desk, and EdTech is Scott Moore, our Director of Educational Technology, where funds for, there was sort of a mix of where funds were for different things. That's all been realigned, and much of the movement of funds is a result of that department, and that's broken out in the larger budget document that you received in detail. And the rest, I'm going to fly through these, because this is just sort of the makeup of each one of those changes. And as maybe you have heard, or had heard through our budget process, we started with a $2.3 million gap. We were able, through additional revenue that was allocated as part of the town partnership, we ended up with an $877,000 budget gap, and the school committee has voted the recommendation to solve that gap by postponing two FTEs, technology positions, and to postpone or buy an advanced technology request. Those two items are significant because they were part of the 2015 override three-year plan, and so we wanted to make sure that we disclose that those part, those two parts of that plan have yet to be executed. They're still part of our planning process, but at this point, we need to make other, the other priorities take precedent. Also, you see the removal of the special education reserve positions that I talked about briefly. And so the real work is really, we have another $151,000 that we need to work with teaching and learning and our curriculum people to remove expenditures. And so we're looking at what kinds of textbooks or materials purchases we can make this year ahead of the budget, ahead of July 1, what could be postponed, or as we move into hiring season and have turnover, what kind, will our salary savings be greater than what we be greater than what we estimated? We have built into this budget, in terms of salary savings, a million dollar reduction in our salary line to anticipate salary savings as part of our, that's just a normal course of what we do. We know we're going to have turnover. We know we're going to have retirements. We just don't know who and how much that's going to be. Last year, we budgeted a million dollars and just, actually, two weeks ago, just hit the mark of just right over a million dollars with turnover. So that is really about good management, I believe, and also acknowledging to the community that we do acknowledge that there are retirements, there are savings when people turn over, and we're not budgeting over our, over what we should be. So with that, this closes the budget portion, and I know that there are CIP projects that you may or may not have questions on. We can address those. But if there are questions regarding the budget specifically, we can pause here and...
Any questions from the board? Where are we in relation to, you touched on some of the unfunded items. Are there any other things you can report to us on how we're doing as compared to what we promised in the override? Or that's it?
So that is a to-do item on my list to get done for the school committee, is to do sort of a, an autopsy of the 2015 override.
Yeah, that's one of the...
What have we done? What did we do? What did we do more than? What did we do less than? These are two of the items that I know of specifically that we are postponing, but I don't know if there are others.
Right.
So that is on the list to get done.
Yeah, and that's going to be important as we plan for fiscal 19.
Correct.
So then that's going to be a key item.
Yeah, so the part of, there are also two positions that were, you saw the reduction in FTE, the senior director of teaching and learning and a data specialist. Those two positions were removed as real, and being identified as not needed, and no plans for a need at this point. So those would be also identified in the report as projected as needed and then not needed, so.
Any other?
So this board and advisory committee and the school committee, I assume, spends a lot of time looking at the enrollment graph, the sort of, what is it, 1977 to today and even into the future. And clearly, over the trajectory of the graph, we've seen a steep increase to the right. I'm wondering how we do in terms of projections. So are our assumptions in the out years accurate more often than not? Or are we being surprised, for lack of a better way to explain it?
So that, to be answered in the future, that is part of a segment of enrollment report that will be built in as part of the reporting out annually. I don't have that information in terms of what the projections were and what the actuals were, but that part of this new enrollment process and reporting process will be to report out on that. Because, particularly because, how close are we? Are we one off? Are we 10 off? Are we 30% off? And what's happening and why?
So let me ask the question in a different way. I remember when we were in the throes of the 2014 override study, 13 override study committee, there was a conversation about the fact that the capture rate had increased over the past couple of years. Is that still true? Are we capturing more of the live births that occur in Brookline? Or are kids that maybe in the years after the recession would have gone to private school, have they returned back to private schools?
So we don't have that information yet either, but we do have what's called a school attending report that, and also pulling in the churn. If you looked at the enrollment report, we're pulling off of DESI, the churn rate, which is the number of students that start school and end school and how many, what's the change in population? That is very high. It's about 8%, roughly 400 students, and that can be very disruptive to a classroom when you have that many students coming, coming and going out of a classroom or out of a school or out of a school district, even one this size. So we are setting up monitoring methods to review those and look at those. So yours is one, a churn rate is another, and our accuracy on our enrollment projections is a, is a third. We also did look at and fixed as part of this year's enrollment report, the reporting of birth information with the town clerk's office. There is, or was roughly a 7% missing population of births, and those are births that are not reported because they are to unmarried women. So that's, when we took, when we extracted the need to know who they were, our birth rates increased and the birth information increased. One of the other pieces we have that we're lining up for this summer is to actually compare the town census that's currently underway. Please fill out your form. Please have your neighbors who have small children, please, fill out their form. We need to know who those two, two-year-olds are, is to compare that town census data with our student enrollment information and see which students are on our enrollment, which ones are missing from either list, and to sort of ferret out and, and seek out why they're not on the census list and who they are, what they are, so that we're not missing any students. And the other is also to be doing outreach in terms of our, the preschools in the area and families, where if they have a five-year-old, is to reach out again and say, do the two-year-old, three-year-old, because again, we have to do student assignment for a new elementary school or student assignment for our existing eight elementary schools and need to know what those two and four-year-olds are. And doing that effort with the town clerk and partnering with the town clerk's office in that effort, in my prior district, we had kindergarten projections where we were off by two students because the census data had gotten so good, and we knew who our four-year-olds were in town, even if they were not in our preschool, they were going to private daycare. So that's the goal.
Wow.
Could I ask a sort of follow-up enrollment question? In the past, probably more than, maybe 10 years ago, we used to have a drop between eighth grade and high school. A number of kids would seem to go off to, to private school, but I sense that that hasn't happened so much now.
No.
And so is there any of that, or is it just less, or?
I think it, I think a lot of it is probably getting skewed by the number of, the enrollment just rising at such a dramatic rate. I mean, the, the pitch at the rise and the fact that it hasn't peaked and capped off is, based on your, on the prior history of the community, it should have peaked and, and sort of, we should be in a dip right now, based on past experience and sort of the 10-year intervals and the cyclical intervals. So the fact that we're still on a, on a trajectory at 45 degrees is, is, makes the next five years kind of very interesting in terms of, are we still growing as development comes on and housing comes on? We're also have another group that's looking at housing conversions and sort of what the residence, change in the makeup of the residency units that are available, and monitoring those, and, and doing that in a way that we can actually start calculating off of that. And that's, the model for that's also included in the enrollment report as to how we're going to do that.
Any other questions? Can we move on? Are we going to be talking about the CIP?
So we only have four that we were going to talk to you about. School furniture is not very exciting. It's the annual appropriation for replacing our school furniture of $90,000, probably under, two other projects or at least two other meeting nights is the expansion of the, of the high school and the schematic design costs, really architectural costs of the ninth school, and then classroom capacity, which is the article, or the article that funds the leases for 24 Webster Place, the Pierce Loft, as well as Putterham and Beep on Beacon, Beep at Putterham and Beep on Beacon. And this year, we're making up part of the total amount that's, we need to pay next year out of a carryover for this year. We don't anticipate a problem in 19. There's funding available in 19 to cover the leases that we have. The leases will become a significant discussion in the next year because they all terminate between the fall of 19. And so we need to go out to bid again for those leases, to continue them or have a discussion about whether we need to, to continue them. We'll have two more years of an enrollment projection to help us, help guide us in that decision-making process. Do we need them for another purpose?
Then we, of course, have the potential of the gift.
We have a potential of a donated building, which will, has the potential for 10 BEEP classrooms. And the, we'll also know the outcome of the ninth elementary school as well, so there are significant sort of decisions and planning that will take place in regards to the classroom capacity. We just finished up a facilities inventory, so we actually, Joe Connolly and Matt Gillis, Joe Connolly knows our former interim superintendent, Matt Gillis, who's the director of operation, they finished a facilities inventory where they've gone through each and every one of the buildings and measured out all of the classrooms. So we have identified all rooms in our buildings that are actually sized to be actual classrooms, whether they're being used as classrooms or not, so that as we look at student assignment, we can tell you what our minimum student population capacity is for each building, what the maximum is, and also use that as a planning tool. And we're in the process of projecting out how many classrooms we will need as this enrollment continues, based on our projection, and that will be a report coming out probably in the next month to, to sort of show the community kind of where we are with our classroom needs and, and what that will look like.
Now, the, this board has been kind of immersed in both the high school expansion and the ninth elementary school. Members of this board are chairs of those respective committees. I'm going to be taking over the, as the selectman's rep on the Baldwin Committee as Nancy Daly comes off the board. So that's, I guess, a bit of news to the community. Any questions on this? Okay. So I think, thank you very much. We'll be voting our recommendations, the budget, some future meeting. So thank you for the presentation. We are running about 35 minutes behind, and we're now moving on to some warrant article Let's skip debt and interest. We'll do that another night for Melissa. So as I said, we're running about 35 minutes behind. We're, the first warrant article is Article 23. I'm going to ask that we try to rehearse for town meeting and try to keep your presentation to about five minutes. Is that possible? I see a very long speech.
It's on.
So introduce yourself.
So, good evening. I'm Mary Minnet. I'm the advisor for Environmental Action Club, and I think this is very fitting for them to be coming after the school department budget, so you can see what the school department is actually funding. So I'll let them go ahead and introduce themselves.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lily Romell. I'm a Brookline resident and a senior at Brookline High School, and I've worked with some peers from the BHS Environmental Action Club to put this resolution article together, and we filed it, and I'm the petitioner because I turn 18 next month and will be a registered voter. So the resolution article I have submitted and am presenting to you tonight will fund infrastructure improvements for people walking, biking, and riding mass transit in Brookline. This resolution calls for two distinct actions to be taken. First, it asks that Brookline shows support at the state level for the passage of a bill, an act relevant to regional transportation ballot initiatives sponsored by Senator Lesser and Representative Walsh. This act gives Brookline the ability to create local option taxes to fund transportation upgrades. That tax can take a few different forms and must be voted upon by the town before it can be implemented. So we want Brookline to support this legislation. And I actually had the privilege of going to the State House on Monday during the school day and testifying in support of the bill regarding the resolution and with the support of the BHS legislature, which is comprised of the student government, teachers, and the administration. Once the act is passed by the state, the second part of this resolution asks that Brookline implements a local option tax to support transportation, abiding by the state act. Specifically, the non-binding tax outlined in my resolution, a three cent local option tax on all gasoline vendors in the town, generating approximately $200,000 in revenue annually, with the funds used explicitly and solely for additional investment in pedestrian, bicycle, and mass transit infrastructure inside the town. Funding from this gas tax will be used to supplement, not supplant, current funding. The ability to move around on foot, bike, or with mass transit is important value to the citizens of Brookline. According to the League of American Bicyclists, Massachusetts has seen more than 100% growth in the number of citizens who commute by bike. The Bicycle Advisory Committee has counted a 41% increase of cyclists during the morning commute since 2008. Walking remains a priority in town, as evidenced by the efforts made by BICAN and the frequent discussions about walkability with respect to the ninth elementary school site. The MBTA continues to set new ridership records. It is important to accommodate these growing numbers by installing comfortable and convenient infrastructure for people on bikes or foot, or enhancing its safety and accessibility. Examples of this infrastructure include sidewalk and crosswalk repairs for pedestrians, cycle tracks, bike boxes, ramps, and bike racks for bikers, and traffic signal prioritization technology, and benches and rain hoods for mass transit units. We recognize that Brookliners walk, bike, and use mass transit as a common method of transportation, and we want to make their lives better by enhancing the safety and accessibility of doing so. Brookline as a town is committed to these upgrades, but is constrained by available revenue and other important budgetary considerations. In the past decade, Brookline Town Meeting has demonstrated a willingness to administer local option taxes through implementations of these taxes, both on restaurant meals and room occupancy. Given the undeniable expensive cost of these, of these projects and the benefits they would bring, we hope that Brookline would support this resolution. The infrastructure that would become affordable through the funding from a three cent gasoline tax enabled by the state bill would therefore be able to be installed in Brookline. It would make walking, biking, and using mass transit more safe, accessible, comfortable, and convenient. As walking, biking, and using mass transit becomes more desirable with better infrastructure, people will choose to transport via these methods more often and will receive personal benefits. Studies have shown that people who walk, bike, and use mass transit are healthier, less stressed, can save money, and are more likely to shop locally instead of driving far away to shop. Walking, biking, and mass transit should be a safe and accessible option for residents of all abilities. This resolution is about making it easier and safer for senior citizens to move around and for the second grade families to walk or bike to school, from making transportation more accessible for people who cannot afford to bike, to drive. There are already hundreds of students walking or biking every day to a BHS. Most kids don't get dropped off, and each of these kids deserve safe accommodations in their daily commute to school. This resolution is about addressing the transportation needs of all citizens equitably. There's no reason there shouldn't be support to raise revenue that would make people walk, bike, and use mass transit in a safer and more convenient manner. The revenue would provide the funding and guidance necessary to implement a long list of sidewalk, bicycle, and mass transit projects already identified but are currently unfunded, therefore improving the safety and accessibility for residents of all ages and all abilities. Not only does walking, biking, and mass transit use, yield health and financial benefits to the user as previously described, but it takes one less car out of that jammed intersection, or it takes the car out of the parking spot that you want to park in. Not only does it provide personal benefits to the walker or biker, but it would reduce traffic congestion and improve the air quality for everybody in the town. And it provides the means for more local shopping, which would help stimulate the local economy, and more accessibility to transportation for those who cannot drive, whether they be too young or too old or unable for some other reason. If Brookline enacts a local option gas tax to support transportation initiatives, it may set a precedent. Nearby cities and towns will be more likely to implement a similar local option tax. In doing so, not only will their communities gain the same benefits, but Brookline residents will benefit as well, both from cleaner air in the region and from the improved infrastructure from when traveling whenever. All Brookline residents rely on our All Brookline residents rely on our transportation network, and all transportation users, drivers, walkers, bike riders, streetcar and bus riders, have something to gain from sidewalks and streets with safer infrastructure. A three-cent local option tax will be successful, given the complete streets policy requirement, a backlog of specific projects already identified and currently unfunded, and a revenue source. This resolution will help ensure that Brookline pursues needed transportation revenue and that its budget reflects its values, all while enhancing personal lifestyles. So we're here today to ask you to support and vote favorably for this resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, I'll try to keep this short.
Please.
Okay. So, my name is Nadia Vitak. I am a junior at Brookline High School and I'm a member of the Environmental Action Club. I appreciate this opportunity to speak with, to you and explain why this gas tax matters and go into more detail about what types of infrastructure we hope to support. So the goal of our gas tax is to open up as many options for transportation as possible and especially for those who can't drive yet, and to make those kinds of transportation safer. And increasing, improving, sorry, improving that these types of infrastructure has several benefits. First, obviously, it would make getting around Brookline much safer and easier. Second, it would help Brookline youth very much. At the moment, many Brookline students are not allowed to bike because their parents won't let them. And so giving them safer streets to bike on would allow them to not have to rely on their parents for rides, explore extracurriculars, expand passions, and develop friendships. Also, an important benefit is that it will make the town of Brookline more active and help to decrease obesity rates. Ooh, sorry. And lastly, it will benefit those who can't drive because of disabilities or age and make it safer for those who are less able to get around using other methods of transportation. But none of, we can't have any of these benefits before our current infrastructure is improved. So ways that the pedestrian, or ways pedestrian infrastructure can be improved are by fixing sidewalks, creating sidewalks where there are none, or creating raised crosswalks. As of now, many roads in South Brookline only have sidewalks on one side of the street, and that does not comply with the complete streets requirements. Mass transit at the moment is the least convenient and accessible for many people because, especially with buses. Many buses lack rain hoods or benches, and this makes it really difficult for people who can't stand up for a very long time or who don't want to be drenched by rain. And buses have the potential to be very helpful for us. They can help us avoid finding parking, they can generally be cheaper, and we live near a city, so most of us don't have to commute very large distances. And it would be really great to take advantage of public transportation. So we want to make it more convenient for people to take public transportation and not have it be a strain on their lives. Lastly, biking infrastructure is one of the more urgent methods of transportation that we want to support. So because of safety needs. Before my injury, I would bike to school almost every day, even in the winter, even on that day several months ago where it was really icy. I live on a hill near Summit Ave, so as I biked down, I wiped out twice. The first time I thought it was a coincidence or something, so that I had to resort to driving. But biking is a really important part of my life. And when I heal and go back to biking, I expect to be able to make sure that the risk of me being injured again is very low. And we can do that by fixing several issues that our streets have at the moment.
I think what we can do is actually hand them in sort of the rest of the documents.
Yeah, please.
Okay. So, oh, right, yeah, I'll hurry, I'll hurry. So.
Whatever you have left, we can give to them.
Yeah, that'd be part of the written record.
So we can help that by creating bike lanes, bike boxes, and bike racks. Thank you for your time.
Just, okay. So one little piece of advice for town meeting. The moderator is going to be sitting there with a stopwatch. So I would suggest you write out your speech.
Yeah, I thought I would have limited time or something. So I had prepared for ten minutes. Sorry.
And he'll be sitting there with a stopwatch, and you'll have five minutes. And at the end, he'll, if you're not done, he'll start yelling. Please be done. Well, I won't do that, but, but, okay. But you did very well. Yeah. Yeah, so technically, the legislation that you're suggesting we support, does it earmark, does it earmark the money towards bicycles, pedestrians, and mass transit, or just for transportation?
No, it's just for transportation in general.
So you'd be asking us, you're asking town meeting to restrict the money more than the legislation requires it be restricted?
Well, so we're asking that the money be explicitly for pedestrian biking and mass transit infrastructure. So rather, because there already is lots of funding for cars and roads, and while there's much more limited funding for the, a long list of projects for other types of infrastructure.
Okay. And then, this is perhaps a more technical question, technical legal question. In the therefore section, where, where town meeting is expressing an opinion for a future action which may not, which may not happen because the, the act hasn't passed, can we, this town meeting cannot bind a future town meeting, so.
It's a non-binding resolution, too.
Right, yeah. Right. So I guess what you'd be saying is, this town meeting believes that if, if we adopt this legislation, this legislation in the future, it ought to be devoted to pedestrians, bicycles, and mass transit, which, which is good, but it's not binding.
Yeah. And in the end, it will be voted upon by the town as well, if.
Right. If future town meeting, okay.
I think one of the things that.
Go ahead, Mike.
That we're really hoping is to support this.
The TV audience, who you are.
Oh, Mary Minnit.
TV audience.
Oh, TV audience, Mary Minnit. So really.
Our vast TV audience.
Got it, we're vast, we're hoping to support this legislation and help it get passed through. So the thinking from other towns was that if Brookline supports this, that would be an encouragement for this to actually get through.
Got it.
Get passed.
I've got two questions, which I'll give you in sort of rapid-fire succession, and you can answer them. One is a philosophical question. Why a gas tax? I think we've seen that the consumption of gas has gone down over the past few years, and there's projections that in the future, the gas tax, the existing gas tax, isn't going to be enough to sustain transportation infrastructure. So why this route as opposed to some of the other things that are floating out there like open road tolling? And then my second question, which is much more technical, is what type of mass transportation infrastructure are you envisioning funded through this, through this three-cent gas tax, since mass transit is generally funded through the MBTA or other multi-regional transportation authorities?
Yeah. Yeah. So I think that we thought about a gasoline tax, just because it is something that people, when passing through Brookline, will purchase and consume, and I think it's something that's easily taxable. And then, types of mass transit infrastructure include traffic signal prioritization technology, which, if you know, yeah, TSP technology, which at like a stoplight would allow the T or a bus car to go through instead of one car.
Which the MBTA is trying to get us to pay for.
Yeah, so, yeah, sure. Also, we, I believe, are not allowed to make the trains or buses any better, but we will work around that by making it more convenient for people in other ways, as I mentioned, by creating benches or rain hoods to make it easier.
Why you chose gas tax?
Oh, my reason?
Yes.
Um, I, well, I guess.
To cut back on cars.
Yeah, yeah, to cut back on cars. And it just seems fair to like give to other.
And you also had the vehicle in that legislation that you could point to, right? Selectman Green.
Is City of Boston on board with this legislation? Because if we raise our gas tax and Boston doesn't, guess who gets to go to get their gas?
Yeah. We do not have their support yet.
Okay, so is that sort of a big gap in this whole idea?
Selectman Heller.
Very pleased to see you standing here and bringing us this legislation, which has an environmental aspect, obviously. And I know you've been working with members of the Climate Action Committee and with Maria Morelli, and she's been very happy to have your, your help and your assistance.
Thank you.
So I, I assume that you're doing the gas tax because you want to bring attention to the fact that fossil fuels are harming our environment. And so on the one hand, this might depress the sale of gas, if people have to pay more, which would kind of mean that we have less money to do the kinds of things you're talking about. So I can't decide whether I want people to buy less or buy more. But there's one phrase which you do not have at the end of your resolution, is or act on anything relative there, too, and the moderator may, may want you to have that. So I think.
I was asked to add that, someone asked me to add that at the end of the resolution article, and I agree to that, so I'm not sure why that wasn't on your copy of it.
When we signed the warrant, we added it for a couple of articles that omitted it in the book.
It's not in my book, but.
Okay. I agree to that.
So I have a question about the mass transit piece of this. I think I heard you say that one of the things you're not going to be doing is, is to support mass transit infrastructure and not add it. Is that correct? So my dream is to see better bus service from South Brookline, which, you know, is in some ways cut off from the rest of the town in terms of mass transit. And so I'm wondering whether that means that you, we couldn't be using this to enhance bus service from South Brookline, it would only be to do things like, you mentioned benches or covered stations for people to wait, et cetera?
Yes, I think the money for mass transit infrastructure would more be for benches and rain hoods, rather than enhancing the trains themselves.
Yeah, but we don't fund the, well, we have an allocation that funds the MBTA, but we don't determine how it's spent.
I know. It's frustrating.
Well, this, this is a public hearing, so let me open it up for public comment. Ms. Rowdy, come join us.
Good evening. My name is Elias Audi. How, how are you all doing?
Okay.
I came here not to oppose any attempt to a green environment. My opposition to this is because I feel it's discriminatory towards the type of business that this is, that's going to fund a project like this. And the reason I say it's discriminatory because of many reasons. First, I, I'm looking at the numbers, three cents a gallon. Three cents a gallon, and I own two locations, that means I will be given $5,500 a month. I tell you right now, I'm closing business. I will not be there, so as every other gas station in Brookline. Who's it going to benefit? Surrounding towns, Boston, gas stations in Newton, West Starksbury, people are not going to stop to drive. People are continuing to drive, but they're going to go other places to fill their tanks with gas. Who's going to get hurt also? Fifteen to twenty families, I only, just myself, support. How about the other gas stations? The families of the other gas station, those are going to be hurt, too. Those are going to be laid off, they're going to be financially destroyed. So I, I would come before you to say that I think this was not thought of properly because, and I see this happening all the time, as gas stations are viewed as cash clouds, as something that you can easily pull cash out of them. There's no checks and balances, money can come in and go out without having to think about them. We run a very tight-knit type of business, where an industry were, were hit all the time by extra and uncontrolled expenses, whether by the oil companies or, or by state regulations, fees, real estate tax, just a ton of Brookline between the real estate tax and the fees and the licensing and all this. I'm up $60,000 allocation a year, that's $120,000 a year, and now you're going to have to add another $120,000, that's $240,000. I cannot survive. I truly cannot survive. And this is me, and I guarantee you every other. You know how many gas stations in Brookline? I counted them today, seven gas stations left. Seven gas stations are going to be able to support financially this project? No way. That's not going to happen. All seven gas stations will be driven out, will be closing for business. I applaud the petitioner for thinking green and environment because I myself, one of those people, but we have to think about the livelihood of other people that are going to be impacted by, by a motion like this. You know, why not a luxury tax? Why gas stations? Why, mobile oil, or sun oil, or, or global, they're not going to be the ones who are paying those three cents, it's going to be us. Even if you build them directly, they're going to reflect it on our cost of doing business. That means we will be on a big disadvantage of not being able to compete with our next-door towns and cities. So I urge you to, not to consider this, to consider, not to consider taxing the gas on this project, if you want to consider, try to seek other options. Why not registration fee for every bicycle on the street? Wouldn't that be proper, too? Why not little extra tax on those electric cars and other cars that are so little more on the excise tax? Then everybody is sharing, in the name of fairness, everybody will share costs, not just put a burden on one single class of business that's so vulnerable to the current economic environment. So I don't want to say too much, I know you're behind, I hope my point is made, and I hope you will vote against this. Thank you very much. Any question, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay. Ms. Coughlin?
Good evening. I wanted to, I came here to speak against, also against, this article. I know it's just a resolution, but we see many things come to us in town meeting that sort of tear away at the business community. As a former business owner, former president of the Chamber, former president of the CCMA, our local business community will not survive on people who can only bike and walk to our businesses. Brookline needs to become a destination in order to maintain our businesses, much like our wonderful restaurant community has with our local option meals tax. But that meals tax doesn't pay for people to cook at home, just like a local option gas tax would fund the bike improvements and pedestrian improvements. I know that for, we have, there is one circumstance in town where the funding from violations and things funds the ADA coordinator or partially funds the ADA coordinator. So perhaps if you've got, if you get a violation, for instance, for parking in a bike lane, maybe those are the kind of funds that could go in this direction. But to take a local option gas that penalizes our drivers to fund another community isn't going to work. And since our school leaders are here, may I recommend, we've got these wonderful students who do all this work, but wouldn't it be great if, like many communities do mock UNs, we could do a mock town meeting in a civics class for our students in student government so they can learn how the town works without it actually impacting real people and real business owners? Let that be the first place to learn how to do this. Thank you.
Mr. Vitolo.
Tommy Vitolo, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. I take great offense to the most recent comment made by Ms. Cohen. With due respect, this young lady is a resident of this town, will be a registered voter by the time town meeting comes around, and has every right, like every other citizen, to petition her government to make changes that she wants to see happen. And how dare you suggest that because she's a student, she doesn't have that right and shouldn't do it? I'm offended by that. Let's talk about the article, though.
Thank you.
Currently, drivers pay on the order of forty cents a gallon between the state and federal gas tax. Forty cents a gallon. The idea that an additional three cents will push gas stations from profitability to going out of business seems a stretch to me. To me, what makes sense is to think, what's the price of gas at each gas station at this moment in Brookline and over the border in each direction? And are they exactly the same? Or in fact, do they vary by a nickel or ten cents? They're certainly not exactly the same, right? We know that gas station prices move around a little bit. And the question is, when motorists, as a class, not as the one crazy uncle we all have, drive out of Brookline to another community in search of saving three cents or two cents or one cent a gallon times twelve gallons in their tank, twelve, twenty-four, thirty-six cents, will there be so many motorists who do that that Elias will notice? I actually think there won't be. It's not a proposal for a thirty cent increase in tax, it's a proposal for a three cent per gallon tax on gas prices that are currently in the two dollar and change range, recently have been substantially higher than that. So this idea that it will push gas stations out of business, I think it's important to think about that, but I don't think it's likely on a three cent local options tax. And of course, surrounding communities may follow suit, they may not. This idea that it's taxing one class of users to benefit another, find me a driver in Brookline who doesn't park the car and then walk to the local business. We all do that because we're an urban community. We are not full of drive-throughs, right? So improving the sidewalks benefit drivers directly because drivers walk. Most drivers I know also take the tea, at least some of the time, and would prefer to wait for the tea in more comfort, would prefer the tea to get through town more efficiently. So this idea that it's pitting one class of Brookline residents against another, I don't see that. I see this as benefiting pedestrians, benefiting cyclists, benefiting transit users actually benefits all of us. And the state doesn't give us, as a town, many opportunities to find new sources of revenue. The state is considering this as an option, and I think it makes sense to do it. And since we have such a backlog of pedestrian, cyclist, and mass transit projects we would like to do and can't find the money to do it, this seems like an awfully nice way to fund a manageable amount of projects, $200,000 a year, not 20 million, and allow us to make progress toward making our community accessible for all of its users. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other? Mr. Rowdy, you've forty...
Just one minute.
No, thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. I urge, because comments is made by Mr. Vitolo about three cents a gallon, I urge anyone to talk to bankers, to accountants who specializes in gas stations, and seek an answer what three cents a gallon can do to any gas station. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Harris, very, very briefly?
Very briefly, super briefly. John Harris, Town Meeting, Precinct Eight. First, I would urge favorable action on this warrant article. Let's not forget, this is merely a resolution, it is not itself a piece of legislation. That's number one. Number two, this is, there are two steps involved in this resolution, and both of them are very big. And the first step is to encourage debate, which I think is at the State House, which I think is a very important thing to do at this point. This is kind of putting a bug in people's ears on this very important issue, and I think it's very important to do that. Basically, that debate at the State House, if in fact it happens, could possibly even mean a statewide tax rather than the town tax, which I understand the local businesses, if it's only Brookline. But at any rate, that's years down the road. We have to remember that transportation departments, transportation planners have kind of historically, by default, basically been car and truck departments. And what this will do is open up a new stream of funding for other, more environmentally friendly, more healthy modes of transportation, like bicycles, mass transit buses, et cetera. So, thank you. I urge positive action. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak briefly on this warrant article? We're not going to vote this tonight, and we're now running, I think, close to an hour behind schedule, unfortunately. So, thank you very much, and we're going to vote this another night. The next warrant article, sole lease for the Runkel School. Who's speaking on that?
I don't know. Austin, is Melissa here to speak on this article?
If not, we'll... Is there any member of the public here for this warrant article? Okay, I'm going to move on. Net zero for the Ninth School. Who's speaking? Mr. Crist? Think you can do a town meeting-style presentation in five minutes?
Well, we'll do our best. We were told, we were planning something, we were told fifteen minutes, but we actually...
I'm running, we're running an hour behind.
We, I understand that.
Okay.
But we wrote this PowerPoint into three parts, we just spent some time out there trying to shorten it down, so we're not sure we can get quite to five minutes, but we'll do our best we can.
Okay, okay.
Although maybe...
Sorry.
I understand, you're busy. Although, is there someone here that can help us find the PowerPoint? It was loaded and advanced on here.
And you are?
I am Werner Lowey.
Austin?
Mr. Man, we were told you could...
There you go, it's already up. Press the spacebar.
Okay, so, we are. I'm Werner Lowey. Spacebar. Climate change, we know it's real.
Though our president doesn't.
Well...
Ah.
Yeah.
He beat me to it.
The political climate's changed, and one of the main reasons here is because we have to do more locally. In Brookline, we've really been a leader. You all recognized climate change as a board of selectmen seventeen years ago. Runkel and the Runkel renovation, the devotion school are really excellent in terms of their energy performance. But, as you know, those were built under standards established by the MSBA, which are higher than those of the building code, a little bit higher. And those requirements also, the MSBA limits us in a number of ways. But for the Ninth Elementary School and even for the high school, because we're providing the funding ourselves, we think we can do a lot better even than we did with Runkel and devotion. The whole point of this warrant article, the reason we're here, is to make sure there's no ambiguity, to be sure that there are really clear energy efficiency goals. Without the constraints imposed by the state, the design process is described in our own Building Commission bylaw, which does require consideration of environmental sustainability goals, which include green technologies and energy efficiency. But it does not establish environmental standards or standards for energy efficiency. That's where there's a possibility of some ambiguity. So this resolution establishes goals that architects, including the project architects, have told us they can design to. It establishes practical goals that they're familiar with. Lead Platinum certification, we all, I think, I don't have to explain what lead is, but with a priority for energy performance points, one of the biggest parts of the lead certification process involves energy performance. And also, a more sophisticated thing, engineers work with energy use intensity. That is, how much energy is used per square foot of space each year. And the goal that is, seems realistic here, is twenty-five. These goals are particularly important because net zero energy really isn't a design standard. It's kind of more of an aspiration. It's a, but with these three specific design goals, we hope to make a significant advance toward net zero energy school. Those last words are somewhat significant in that they read a little differently than what is in our resolution. We realize that we need to be clear that what we're looking for is a significant advance toward this with the acknowledgement that there's a good chance we won't actually get to net zero. So, it's important to recognize that this doesn't set hard and fast requirements, it doesn't change the town design process in any way, it doesn't interfere with the cost-benefit analysis that comes later in the design process, it doesn't tie us down to any kind of particular design, the architects will do the design, and the board of selectmen, school committee, building commission, the building committee, the whole process, continue to review designs, make the decisions about design and funding, which ultimately, of course, get approved by town meeting. But this sets unambiguous goals to allow the architect to work toward. And for a little more explanation about the design itself, I'll turn it over to Alan Crist.
Hi, my name's Alan Crist. I'm a Town Meeting Member in Precinct Four, as well as a member of the Green Caucus and EDAB. In my portion of the presentation, I'll discuss the components of a net zero energy building, as well as several precedents which have made significant advances on the path to net zero. Net zero buildings include a variety of energy conservation measures. The primary components include a heavily insulated exterior envelope, significant sun shading devices, high-performance windows, and a carefully considered massing with north and south-facing window openings. The mechanical systems often separate heating and cooling from ventilation through the provision of a 100% dedicated outdoor unit for ventilation air, and geothermal or air-source heat pump systems are also coupled, often coupled with this. Other measures, such as energy recovery ventilators or PV, are also used to further increase efficiency. This chart here, although it seems to be a little small here, it's about the cost of net zero energy buildings. The cost of a net zero or lead platinum project can vary a lot from project to project, but cost parity with standard construction can be possible in some cases with integrated design. The image above includes two red lines which depict the cost of devotion and Runkel renovation projects relative to a variety of other K-12 schools, K-12 schools in New England, some of which are either lead platinum or net zero site energy. While there's not a consensus regarding the cost premium that's required for a net zero project, a recent National Grid study noted that a school project can achieve 25% to 27% energy performance beyond the mask code with 10 to 12 energy conservation measures. The incremental cost of this is about $6 a square foot with a payback period of 16 years. So I thought now I'd just quickly run through a few projects and talk about these costs. So devotion here, we're showing at 528 a square foot, and Runkel at 276 a square foot. The first project here is the Pell School in Newport, Rhode Island. It's notable for achieving an EUI of 35 and $116,000 savings per year on energy while limiting its construction cost to 265 a square foot, which is comparable to the 276 square foot unit cost of Runkel. And here's some more images of the Pell School. The second one here is the MacArthur School in Vinghamton, New York. This one has a very low EUI of 10 and a higher construction cost of $616 a square foot, which is a bit more than the 528 a square foot cost of devotion. This project includes geothermal ground source heat pumps, on-demand ventilation, PV, extensive daylighting, and robust controls for lighting. There's some more images of that, of the interior next year of the school. And the last one here is the MLK School in Cambridge. This was built for 420 a square foot, including $100 a square foot for hazardous materials removal. Its EUI is 33, which is 60% less than typical educational buildings in New England. And then it also is using natural daylight, high-performance exterior walls, and rooftop PV. So overall, we just want to make the point that it's possible with an integrated process that begins very early to achieve something close to keep the cost of doing a net zero building to the minimum. And next, Kathleen?
Hi, I'm Kathleen Scanlon. I'm Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. In the interest of time, oops. You've now heard how we go about making a school net zero energy and seen that even if we cannot yet be sure if the Ninth Elementary School could be fully net zero, we could set that as our goal. Why pursue a net zero energy goal? First and foremost, we have a moral obligation to future generations to leave a livable planet, and now more than ever, addressing climate change will demand action at all levels of government. Seventy percent of all climate change mitigation measures and 90% of all adaptation measures are implemented at the local level. There are other benefits... There are other benefits to a net zero building that are less obvious. Working toward a net zero ninth school is a natural step in our town's commitment to addressing climate change. As you know, in 2008, Town Meeting created the Selectman's Climate Action Committee, which developed a comprehensive climate action plan to reduce our emissions and consider climate change in our town decisions and planning. And the climate action plan sets a greenhouse gas reduction goal of 25 percent below 1990 levels by 2020, just three short years, and 80 percent by 2050. But Brookline's emissions have been flat for the last several years, and business as usual is not going to allow us to meet our climate action plan target by 2050. So a net zero ninth school puts teeth in that commitment. A net zero goal will have a significant impact on our emissions because it begins to tackle the biggest source of those emissions, our buildings. It focuses us on the performance of our new school and getting the most value from our construction and operating dollars. By taking responsibility for reducing our emissions, Brookline charts a path towards sustainability and a livable future for our children that other towns can and will emulate. And these are some of the other communities that are pursuing net zero. Our neighbor Somerville has a goal for its community to be carbon neutral by 2050. Cambridge has adopted its net zero twenty-five action year plan. And Lexington's Town Meeting funded the creation of an action plan to make all buildings in town carbon neutral as part of a net zero emissions plan. So the most energy efficient schools that are consistent with fiscal responsibility should be a community value held as deeply as any of our educational values. And new materials and building methods are being invented and advanced every day. We live in a world marked by constant innovation. So why would Brookline not seize this opportunity to build a truly 21st century school that reflects our community values? Thank you.
Thank you.
In looking at the language in the resolved clause for the ninth elementary school, the presentation seemed to indicate that you wanted a goal to be set. And the language says it shall be designed to obtain sixteen of possible, sixteen of sixteen points, the lead V4 certification platinum level, and an EUI of twenty-five. KBTU, that's all Greek to me. But that, to me, is very, very prescriptive. So what if the cost of getting point sixteen is so much greater than, you know, fifteen and it may not make, may not be cost effective? So should the language be a little, to the extent feasible, to the extent with the cost, you know, the cost benefit equation, you know, comes out ahead or, you know, something a little more legally elegant than that?
Yeah, I mean, we recognize it's a score first and foremost, and the school priorities come first. And we trust that the decision makers would be keeping that in mind as they're making decisions down the road, right?
So my suggestion would be, you did that in the high school language, is throw in somewhere in here, to the extent feasible, or to the extent the cost benefit analysis makes sense, or, you know.
Let me comment on the cost benefit analysis. I think that's more problematic because there are a lot of different ways people look at these things. When you look at the length of time you're going to have a solar panel, and in this town, we have traditionally looked at a useful life of seven years. Well, we know that that doesn't apply to everything. So you're going to have, you're going to have a difference, you're going to have a difficult time deciding. It's not as clear, I think, the cost benefit analysis. Furthermore, how can you put a price on clean, a clean planet?
Well, we're going to have to because the project has a budget.
Well, it has a budget, but we also have to clean up our, we have to make our environment cleaner. And so our priorities have to be, it's really a matter of survival. And I know that that's long from now, but I have grandchildren and their children's children are going to be, you know, suffering from the effects of the things we do today. And I don't, so I think we have to be careful about the issue of cost. I also think that, as I said before, sometimes we'll put, you know, we'll say, well, something, is it going to exceed, is it going to be only seven years? And I know the advisory committee has used that, seven years for, you know, is there going to be a payback?
But in this resolution, we're not being prescriptive.
I know, but I'm saying that I hesitate to add cost benefit.
I think all that Selectman Olsinski is saying is that instead of shall be designed, it should be written, the goal shall be. You know, so that's clear that, you know, this is not, you know.
The reason I stood up is that that's actually maybe the magic word. We haven't, we just, we met with the building department yesterday and talked with them about exactly this issue. Because, as I say, we're really quite optimistic that from looking at all these numbers on it, it's not going to be a huge premium. But as I said, the bylaw, the resolution is drafted as not to change the decision-making process. I mean, people, people down the road will look at the numbers regardless of this. But I think what we weren't sufficiently aware of perhaps is that sort of how seriously resolutions are taken by town staff.
Yes.
They're saying, well, it's a resolution, even though it says you shall, it's just a resolution.
No.
We're hearing loud and clear from you, from the building department, and Mr. Green, I think maybe, the magic word maybe, goal, to state these as goals so that, to respond to that.
Okay. Then you'll have my support.
I just want to make sure that by passing this resolution, we're not tripping into a programmatic decision. So this wouldn't impact particular programs or facilities or uses within the school.
No, it just, it just gets the option on the table from the very beginning when it's most useful to have net zero principles being considered. Because the earlier you start integrating the principles, the more construction cost parity you can gain. So eventually, all these, you know, decisions will be evaluated by the, by the building committee, right? And so that's when they would look. But at least it gets them thinking about it from the very beginning and choosing systems that help reinforce the principles even if, you know, there's no cost difference. You know, maybe it adds, it adds to the pathway to get there.
Programmatically, there's a great statement in the education plan prepared by the school committee, where for the first time, I think, a very strong statement about how a state-of-the-art building can be, can become part of the educational curriculum. So we hope that'll happen.
Let me, I'll just comment one thing about that, which is that when we, the net zero subcommittee took a tour of the MLK school, and one of the most impressive things, actually, is their use of, I guess you would call them measuring tools to show the kids what happens when you, when you use less electricity here or when you have sun there. It was, it was clearly the intent to build in a scientific, educational component to their, the net zero in that school, which I think Alan mentioned before. And it is quite impressive.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this warrant article? Okay, I see none. Any other comments from the board? Okay, so who wants to work with the petitioner on some revised? Let's, I'll communicate with me.
Okay, sounds good.
I think just a couple of words.
Okay.
I'll be happy. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. One more warrant article. What I'm going to do is go to Article 20, then we'll go to the 40B hearing, the Waldo, the eight to 10 Waldo hearing, and then we'll come back to the solo lease for the Runkel school since there's no one from the public here wishing to speak on that that I'm aware of. We'll just, yeah, yeah. Mr. Harris.
Hi.
We are now a half hour behind, but every minute you take, we're getting, so.
We're getting further behind.
Right.
Okay. Very brief, very brief.
So this should be your rehearsal for town meeting, right?
Okay, I'll be even more brief than that. Have you folks gotten the latest revision, which is subsequent to the Human Services Subcommittee of AC?
I don't think so. The key difference is it has a lot of footnotes. Or duh.
Do you have footnotes? That should be the one.
This is 21. We don't have it.
Okay, we don't have, is this, I recognize, I would recognize.
Twenty.
It's going around and it's a three pager and it's got lots of footnotes. And that was, that is a draft that, first of all, incorporates every idea.
Now, is this, has advisory voted this?
Tomorrow night.
Or, so the subcommittee has voted this?
Yes. The Selectman's Climate Action Committee dealt with this several days ago, and we've incorporated every idea of theirs, I think you'll find in this draft, with one exception, which I'll talk about in one second. And then, a few nights ago, the Human Services Subcommittee of Advisory went over our first submission, line by line, and this is.
As their want to do.
Okay, and Sitsky Humphrey came up with this draft, with all the corrections, et cetera. And then I added the footnotes there, which was one of their requests. You'll see it's very well footnoted. So basically, where this comes from is that during the election, candidate Trump spoke about tearing up the Paris Climate Agreement. So when he did that, we formed a working group at Climate Action Brookline and came up with this warrant article. Our timing is actually very good because Trump recently announced that he would have a decision on the issue by the meeting of the group of seven in late May, and that's just about the time of town meeting. So this will be a very good educational campaign, and as a matter of fact, that's what we intend this to do. Basically, the Paris Climate Agreement, 194 countries have signed, around the world, have signed the agreement already. The exceptions, Nicaragua, Syria, Uzbekistan, and I believe North Korea. Those are the only exceptions in the world. So if Donald Trump does pull us out, and by the way, the United States has signed and ratified the agreement, and the agreement has gone into effect. If, if, if Donald Trump pulls us out, it would be a, just an astonishing event in actually, I guess, world diplomatic history. So now, one thing to say, just to, sorry?
Won't be the first.
Won't be the first. I'm just, I'm almost done, almost done.
All right.
What we are talking about here is basically, the actual signatories to the event, to the agreement are nation states, but in their wisdom, the Paris people, the committee, came up with a category called a non-state actor zone, and where, which is very inclusive. They would like everybody, anybody and everybody to join that, and that's what we're talking about. And here's the final thing that I would say, is that the Paris Agreement, even for state signatories, has, it is an instrument of moral suasion. One thing you would find to look at the agreement itself is that there are no enforcement provisions, legal enforcement provisions whatsoever. So there's one level of moral suasion for the actual signatories, the states themselves, and we're talking about a kind of, I guess I'd say, almost a fan club of that group in the non-state actor zone. And that's what we are asking Brookline to, to join in, as a non-state actor to the Paris Agreement. Thank you.
So I'm Dr. Richard Rosen. I work on the issue of climate change pretty much full-time for the last few years. The reason I've joined in and supporting this warrant article is because, again, I don't think we need to convince our selectmen to deal with climate change, and we don't need to convince you that it's a very vital issue. I think the key thing here is not only to participate in a world level of activity so that people around the world get to know what Brookline is doing and has done, but the key thing is that, as you know, the Selectman's last climate action plan for Brookline was dated 2012. So it's, in this era of rapid change, it's way out of date. So the Paris Agreement basically sets up a structure of review every five years. I think, you know, well, Brookline wouldn't be obliged to do that. It's a convenient timing, and so we're advocating that this resolution be passed to have the selectmen draw up a new climate action plan, and by the end of 2018, which gives us almost two years to put that in force. And I think one idea I just want to throw out is that while the 2012 plan, of course, was very innovative, being a fairly new subject for a town like Brookline to deal with, what I hope to see in the 2018 plan is actually some enforceable provisions. Because if you, if you have a plan and you don't enforce it or have incentives to accomplish it, there's no point in having a plan, in my view. So the key thing is to, to start a process, to develop the next generation of plan, and, you know, up the ante in terms of what Brookline can accomplish to, to help deal with the climate issue.
Okay, I'm just looking at the subcommittee language. So can we, in a resolution, say that the town agrees? Or is that the right language? So we're agreeing to.
I think that's sort of a legal issue. We could ask your attorney, but it just basically says that this, the town files.
Yeah, I have, I have no problem with, with the intent of the warrant article. I think that it's, it's, it's fine. I'm just, I guess, my days on the advisory committee is kind of coming through.
Yeah, well, could we agree that you, we could consult the town's attorney and town's council and see what the best language there is? Because obviously, we're neutral. I mean, whatever you feel is legally appropriate is fine with us.
And then I'm also concerned about, in four, where we're committing to develop a plan, I'm just wondering if this is going to be an impact on staff? Do we have the staff? Is this going to require funding? Are we, do we have the resources to do it?
Well, on that issue, there's a couple of sub-points. Number one is certainly myself and others in Climate Action Brookline would be happy to play a major role in drawing up a plan. On the other hand, not to be naive, I assume the selectmen and town staff would want to have some involvement. How that divides up, I think, is premature to try to figure out at the moment. But clearly, we would want to try to minimize impact on town staff if that's the desire of the selectmen.
So is this something the Climate Action Committee would?
No, I think, I mean, it's, you know, we're certainly going to weigh in on it, but in terms of actually doing the work, it's, you know, establish a subcommittee, a partner with CAB. But I do think that there's a role for the planning department here, and I see Ms. Steinfeld in the audience. And currently, Maria Morelli, who is staff to the Climate Action Committee, is supposed to be, I believe, quarter time, halftime, I'm sorry, halftime. And you never know what's coming. And this year has been very busy with, you know, what's.
Aggregation.
No, and 40Bs and, and staff has been diverted. So you never know what's coming, you never know what's going to hit. And I. And I have felt that Maria has been pulled in too many directions.
I would suggest, in number four, we, the language be, we set a goal of revising the, yeah, do, kind of the same comment from the previous, set it as a goal. And if, depending on what happens, you know, we may have the staff, we may not.
I think that would be okay. Yeah. Just to point out, I mentioned earlier that there was one area where we felt, you know, Maria was asking that that, number four, say by the year 2020. We had a long discussion about that, and the reason, the importance of 2018 is that in the, in the Paris Agreement itself, it talks about five-year assessment periods, and the first of those kicks in the, in the year 2018, every five years after, and then every five years after that. And so if we are, the whole idea, the whole beauty of Brookline aligning with that 2018 is we're in sync with everybody else, number one, and we can compare our progress with, say, comparable-sized towns around the country and around the world in that same timeframe. So, and I would reiterate what Dr. Rosen said, which is that Climate Action Brookline, myself as a new co-chair, we would be also willing to take a role in this, number one. Number two, I do want to point out that the 2012 plan was largely a volunteer plan by members of the Selectmen's Climate Action Committee. And, and number, that actually would be, it's a dynamite plan for its, for its era, and a lot of the new plan would simply be working on that kind of framework and updating it seven years, eight years, eight years rather, six years later.
I think, I think if you change the language so it's a goal...
Okay. On number four?
Yeah.
On, okay. And by the way, on number three, we were also addressing the issue of agrees on number three. It turns out that I meant to put another footnote on here in terms of the filing procedure with the non-state actor zone is, it's online, it's just a matter of filling out a little application, it's, you know, commenting.
Yeah. I think probably the, the right town meeting urges, be it resolved that town meeting urges...
This is number three?
Yeah. Well, generally, so, town, this is a non-binding resolution, so would be, town meeting is urging the town, you know, as you heard in the prior discussion, you know, we take these resolutions very seriously.
Yep.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this warrant article?
I'm sorry, just to be clear, when, when you say urging the town, were you, were you referring to number three?
Be it resolved that town meeting urges, be it resolved, I don't know, I, to draft on the fly is very...
Yeah, understood. Okay. Okay. We'll work on that. Okay. Thank you.
Any, any other discussion on this? Okay. We'll vote on this another night. We'll, there's some work, I think, that has to be done on the, on the wording.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Sorry for the late start. So this is, we're moving on to the 8 to 10 Waldo Street 40B eligibility, and this is perhaps a little like Groundhog Day. We've been here before. But what we've done with the, whenever we have a 40B application, the state subsidizing agency asks the town for comments, and we have a public hearing to get comments from the public to help guide us in, in determining what we should tell the state. Now, we held a public hearing on the initial 40B application, I don't know, a few months ago. Since that time, the developer, Chestnut Hill Realty, has revised its application, and the state has given us, the state subsidizing agency, Mass Development, has given us an opportunity to submit comments on the revised application. Just to kind of step back a little on, talk about 40Bs. 40B is a state law that allows developers to exceed the, the allowed limits of local zoning if, if a community's total number of affordable housing units is below a certain level. The target level in, in the subsidized housing inventory, that's the technical term, is 10% of the town's housing units. Right now, the town is, I think we're running about, what, nine-ish percent, give or take? 9.2%. And we just achieved a one-year safe harbor under the housing production plan. We've approved in the last three months 172 units for the subsidized housing inventory. So, right now, the town is in a position where we don't have to say yes. But just because we can say no doesn't mean we should say no, because we still haven't met the 10%. So we should, if we see a project we like, try to approve it to help us meet the 10% and also to help us meet the, you know, affordable housing is a, is a big problem in Brookline and in the Boston region in, in, in general. Now, I will say that the developer is working with us on a alternate proposal, and those discussions are continuing. They're, I think they're kind of in the, the early stages of developing what that alternate proposal is going to look like. So, just keep, keep that in mind. And I hope those of you who are interested in this project are following what's going on in that other process, and that's the Coolidge Corner Study Committee, and you can subscribe on the town's website and be notified of all meetings of the Coolidge Corner Study Committee. And that committee is looking at this site, plus another site at 1200 Beacon Street, which is the Holiday Inn, and working with the developer on that process, on that, on that project, too. So, out of this meeting, out of this, we will kind of, similar to what we've done in the past, we will summarize what we've heard and incorporate them into the town's response. And I'll also say that initially, we weren't given an extension, so the Planning Department has issued, has, has sent some preliminary comments to the, to Mass Development on this, which we will then supplement and revise according to what we hear today and the sense of, of the board. So, with that said, I'll turn it over to Ms. Geller.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm here tonight with Margaret Murphy from Chestnut Hill Realty, and Steve Schwartz from Gulston Stores. So they can probably answer questions that I can't answer if I can't. And unfortunately, Mark Levin was out of town today, so isn't, isn't here today, but sends his regards to the board.
Look what he's missing.
We drew straws, what can I tell you? So, as, as you well pointed out, we are certainly in the process of looking at the other alternatives for the site, and I think our next meeting is sometime in the middle of May, where some other alternatives will be presented, and I think the committee is working away on that. So we'll go through what we're proposing here and can show you what we've changed. So, the modifications that we made since the last presentation, submittal of the PEL, was a reduction of units from 320 to 299. The height went from 21 stories to 12. We eliminated six of the four-bedroom apartments, and we reduced the square footage by 66,000 square feet, which is almost the area of the site, and elimination of the outdoor pool that we had on the site. So this is the project site. Waldo Street, Beacon Street, Harvard Street, and John Street, sort of behind the commercial areas on Beacon Street and Harvard Street, and it fronts on Pleasant Street. The access that we proposed before will be virtually the same. Access would be directly in off of Pleasant Street. Service access to the existing stores and to the development would happen in this back alley here. There would be a courtyard entrance that comes in this way and then goes back out onto John Street, and access would be two-way from John Street. And there's a large green space that we've created in the back of the building, and access to the garage will still be through a ramp system on the back corner of the garage. So pushing most of the development towards the, the commercial area, and then fronting on Pleasant Street with commercial on the ground floor on Pleasant Street, and then residential as it turns the corner down into this part of the site. So as I said, we have two-way access from John Street. The MBTA Green Line is obviously, our bus line is there, it's a very transit-rich area. So, we also have done some additional work on the traffic, which we don't believe there's going to be a significant impact on service with some modifications that we would propose. And the parking is completely hidden from, from outside the development. So, we also proposed, as I said, this landscape green space, you can see that, as well as some real improvements to the streetscape along both Pleasant Street and then the courtyard entrance that we have along here, along the John Street access to the site. It was intended to sort of create a distance between the existing development, the residential development of budding us, and the new development. And then this is a view from Coolidge Corner, sort of shows where it is in relation to the other tall buildings in the area, and it's now 12 stories, again, as opposed to the 21 that was originally proposed. I think I talked about most of this, but, so the market rate, there's 299 market rate in affordable studio, one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. Fourth, we have amenities space, as well as a management office on the first floor, 11 stories of apartment over that first floor, and then 333 covered parking spaces. Parking, again, similar to what we had before, two levels below grade, one level at grade. The amenities include a lobby, leasing and management office, a Wi-Fi center, a fitness center, and then the landscape green space courtyard outside. The modified apartment mix would be of the 299 market rate in affordable units, seven studios, 158 one-bedrooms, 104 two-bedrooms, and 33 bedrooms. And the affordable mix would be 60 of that total, so 20%, two studios, 32 one-bedrooms, 22 bedrooms, and six three-bedrooms. And those are for residents whose income is at or below 50% of AMI. The Coolidge residents projected rents, the market rates would be starting at $2,600, and the affordable units would be at $750 to $1,056, and those are set by HUD's income guidelines. So the way the, the building works from the ground, the lower ground level, garage level, I'm sorry, that's the floor play, the lower garage level, there's 151 parking spaces there, 141 parking spaces at the upper level, and then there's parking on the left side of the screen that goes back behind the stores on Harvard Street at grade, which is sort of at the back of those buildings. So you, the parking in the, the rear of those buildings are, are next to each other. And then the amenity space for the, for the apartments and the access and elevators and everything is on the first floor on the right. And then as you go up the second floor, residential development happens, and then floors, so you have, oops, sorry, you have a little bit, the building steps back as it goes up, floors three through nine, and then floors 10 through 12, steps back even further, and then just sort of the ending there. What do we, providing benefits, high-quality market rate in affordable housing, repurposing an underutilized and dilapidated commercial property, boosting housing near public transportation, certainly is a transit-oriented development project, providing housing for people with mobility issues, and improving the streetscape along both, both streets that we butt, and then obviously additional customers for area businesses. And that's it. So I hope I picked up some of your time there.
In the earlier slide, I think you gave a range for the affordable units, but the market rate units, you just gave the, the lower or beginning price. What is the range for the market rate units?
It's about, yeah, so from that 20, whatever it was, 20, do I remember the number? 2,600 to 8,000.
It's better than 13.
Well, they don't have the four bedrooms anymore.
Right.
Right.
So...
Well, you still have some of the four bedrooms. Is that not correct?
No, they're gone.
We have no four bedrooms now, so if you look at the mix that we have, there's only three bedrooms.
So it's 8,000 for a three-bedroom apartment, which seems to be way out of the local market.
That would be the, not all of the three bedrooms, obviously, it would be the, the ones that are on the top floor and certain, certain of the buildings. Because the building steps back, the corner units are more, more valuable.
Go back to the, the slide that had the perspective from, yeah, that guy. So, what happens if the stores in front build up to what they're allowed to build? I don't know what the height is. Do you know, Ms. Steinfeld, do you know what the height is in Coolidge Corner, the allowed height?
Probably around this, like, G.
No, no, that's a G.
It's a G, yeah.
Yeah, that's the...
Yeah, the problem would be, I think, is the FAR, that they're already pretty...
Oh, really?
High on their FAR because of the lot size. So we'd have to look at that. I don't know how high they could build, Neil. I'd have to, I'd have to explore that. But they also have, you know, there's not a lot of interest in doing much to those buildings. We've certainly explored that opportunity, because that would certainly make it a very different project if we could do something there.
But today, the owner may not have interests, but who knows what tomorrow brings?
It's true, but they're long-term holders of that property, all of those properties along that edge. Floor area ratio, sorry.
Any questions from the board? Selectmen Franco?
Can you just tell me what the, the proposed height is now? It's 12 stories, but is that 120 feet? Is it 130 feet?
I think it's around 120 feet, but I don't have the specific dimension, to be honest with you. But it should be around 120 feet, because they're, they're generally 10, 10 feet floor-to-floor for this type of residential development.
And then mechanicals and...
Yeah, penthouse and stuff would be in the center.
Okay.
So this is not the final design, I hope, right?
No.
Okay. So, you know, what stands out is, it sort of stands out, the rest of the area there. It's like a cereal box on a table. And I guess I don't really have a question, just an observation, that maybe you'd want to make it a little more aesthetically pleasing.
I'll tell our architects that, for sure. They'll be happy to hear the comment. I think the building, you know, really, this is just amassing at this point, and obviously the, the building, you know, the work that we're doing for the committee, we're looking at really how to, how to actually shape the building, shape the form, so that it becomes a lot more integrated into, into the area. And that's our hope, is that we're able to do something like that versus, versus a building like this.
So, you've cut the height from 21 stories to 12, but the number of apartments and presumably the number of bedrooms hasn't gone down by a commensurate percentage.
Well, we had a lot more height at the corner before, so we basically shifted the height around the whole, the whole site now has 12 stories, as opposed to a height in the, in the corner. So it wasn't like we had the square footage going down directly. It's not, that's not the same, it's not proportionate that way. So, we were able to keep the number that made sense for us from an economic perspective. So we were able to keep the number that made sense for us from an economic perspective. This seemed to work, and we were able to lower significantly the height of the building. But it wasn't, it's not a direct proportion. We did cut 60,000 square feet out of the building, though, which is not insignificant.
That's something like 15 percent, rough?
Yep.
In my, yeah.
The height is about 40 percent.
Right, but the mass is only 15 percent. So think of it as a balloon.
I believe at our last hearing, we expressed some concern about the pedestrian experience, given that this is a major commercial area in town, probably the major commercial area. Can you just remind me about what the anticipated sidewalk widths are, and how a pedestrian who's walking by either on John Street or on Pleasant Street would experience the building?
Yeah, so right now, if you look at the, it's not really great. I don't really have a good image to show you this, but I can kind of explain it. Right now, when you walk down Pleasant Street, the building sits directly on Pleasant Street. And our plan was to have the building, the story, the first, I think it's the first two stories step, be at the face of the street, but the first floor stepped back, so it was like an arcade. I think we showed that image at the last presentation, which would allow the streetscape to be a lot more substantial, you know, similar to what was proposed at 700 Brookline Avenue, where there's an overhang, but there's a lot of space. So that was the idea, and then streetscape improvements with planting and pavement materials and furniture and all that kind of stuff would happen in that area. So the idea is to create a pleasant street, streetscape, that's a much nicer public realm and a place that you would want to go to. I think the idea on John Street was to make that feel more residential, and I think that's the place to, Selectman Green's comments about how to make that facade, how you treat that facade so it feels more residential, maybe it steps back a little bit, maybe it does something so it has a residential feel. It's kind of an interesting site, because these buildings have, they're basically the back of the building, the rear yards, this is sort of their front doors. The rear yards face the street, and there's a fence there. This is an existing parking lot, there's a parking lot here. These are really the only buildings that face the street, the residential buildings that face the street, so trying to continue some sort of facade along this front that was consistent with that would make sense on that side of the street.
As I recall, at our last discussion, there was a lot of concern about the shadows of this building. So have you done any analysis, have you done any shadow studies?
Yeah, we haven't done any further shadow studies on this side. The one thing that is kind of interesting is that this is a nine-story building, so there's a lot of shadows that are, because of where the sun is, the angle there, there's a lot of shadows that are already casting on this direction, and...
So this will just make it worse?
This is actually, it'll be definitely different, and not better, but we haven't done the, we haven't done the shadow studies to know exactly where they are yet, but it's certainly a lot less impact than the original plan.
Let me open it up for public comment, so just feel free to come on up. And let's try to keep it very briefly, please.
Hi, I'm Karen of Babcock, and I'm here once again because I love my building, hate the neighborhood. Two of three days now, we have all kinds of crime, noise, extensive noise, lots and lots of crime, and I can't wait to move. I like Brookline because I like living in a town, and I like being, having access to public transit. But this, this new 40B, it's not affordable, the affordable units aren't too affordable, and it's discriminatory to not have any sectionettes on the top floor, and it's also inconsiderate of the neighbors. I wouldn't want someone to dwarf my house if I finally owned one, and I'd really like to know how to move to Brookline, near Coolidge Corner, near the Coolidge Corner area, sooner rather than later. Rapings, muggings, knife being stabbed, drug busts, raids, I've seen several people arrested. I can't take it anymore.
That's not a comment on this project, so...
I'm also suggesting that you do the Red Tree Real Estate, have them market differently if you can, because they're marketing to students, they're trying to convince them to live here, and I can say with all certainty that probably a lot of the other residents do not want a lot of adults that are 30 or that are under 30 to live here. They don't need to live in each and every single residential building. They're spoiled brats, they don't need to live here.
We can't discriminate.
No, but I mean, they don't need to live in every single building.
Okay. Can you comment on the mass?
They cause all the thunder problems, all these BS spoiled brats.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Elena Byhoff. I live on 32 James Street, which is right on the corner of James and Pleasant. I thank you for having the second hearing. I was at the first one. It was much more robustly attended than this one, but I feel like a lot of the concerns that were brought up at that meeting were not fully addressed in this resubmission. So I wrote a letter as part of the town's response to the mass housing request, and our main concerns were as follows. The sheer volume of people, the way it would affect the traffic and safety. As you, I'm sure, know, that there's a policeman standing on the corner directing traffic at rush hour every weekday to bring 333 new cars. That hasn't been changed at all in the new plan, and that would significantly impact traffic. Again, also, living on James Street, really kind of the last right turn you can take before you hit the traffic right at Coolidge Corner. I have a small child, I'd be worried about the significant traffic increase, especially because right at the corner of James and Pleasant, because of the stop sign, you kind of can't see who's coming around the left turn, and it would become a tremendous traffic issue and safety issue, really, having this many cars just pulling up through the street. The other concern is just the sheer volume of people taking the tea in the morning. You had mentioned in your presentation, the gentleman who is no longer here. Oh, there you are, hi. That you feel like it's a well-served area by public transportation. I take the tea every morning at 8:15. I often have to wait for three cars. I often have to walk up towards Washington Square. I can't imagine the 290-so-odd units would make that any easier, any better, even if they all brought cars and drove in. I could imagine some of them would still take the tea. My other concern, yeah, so it's just, it seems like there's a lot of shock and awe at the 21 stories, and this is like, oh, just kidding, this is what we really wanted? Now that we've scared you, and we're going to take the 21 stories away, we're going to sneak in like our dirty little plan? Not to make it acrimonious, I'm sorry. The very last thing...
There'll be no sneaking.
The very last thing is, I use that library, the Coolidge Corner Library, every single day. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old. It is the busiest library I have ever been to. I can't imagine building that many new units directly across the street would make it a more pleasant, more fulfilling experience. So all of the concerns I thought that were brought up at the very first meeting haven't fully been addressed to my satisfaction, and I would imagine, I don't know, 50 other people that were here last time would probably agree with me. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi, Liz Smith Shaw, 1264 Beacon Street. Just to emphasize what the previous speaker just mentioned, that this presentation does not seem to address or adequately address many of the objections at the prior hearing for this 41B proposal. In addition, although they've, as you noted, eliminated something like, what, 20 percent or 15 percent of the square...
15, 15-ish.
Yeah, the density of population is still much larger, and this is an area, I think, that is, has difficulty in absorbing that many people, especially if you consider the other projects that are being proposed. So I have one question that they, that you tried to, I think illicit from the presenter, which was, what's actually the distribution of those rental units? Like, you know, is there going to be like 300 at 8,000 and, you know, five at 2,500?
Is that in the PEL, is that in the PEL application?
Yes.
So that's on, that's online, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, the exact distribution is online.
Yeah, I just, my concern is, is that, is like with the prior proposal, it really wasn't going to, it was going to exacerbate the rental market upgrades. So whether this, how much of an impact that's going to have, is it really going to push rates down, and is it going to cause them to go up? Anyway.
Yeah, as you know, that's an issue I've always had, but unfortunately, it's not an issue for 40B. So you may want to talk to your legislator about those issues, and sort of indicate that the way 40B functions in many situations goes against the whole idea of integrated housing for that very reason. And they need to be aware of that and wake up to that.
Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Richard Nguyen, 60 Brown Street, Brookline, Massachusetts. Had the pleasure of dealing with former Selectman Geller when he was sitting on that side of the table and promoting the 40B at St. Aden's. So I feel like I had a good education on that occasion about what to expect. So I think obviously there's some improvement in this proposal, but it no way goes to meet the objections that were brought forth by the community here last time. The housing street level on John Street sounds really good, so I would say that would be something to continue with. I believe one of the reasons that a 40B can be denied is that if it's commercially not viable. And I'd like to bring to the Selectmen's attention the article in the Financial Times today, "Fears Mount Over U.S. Construction Boom." And the head of the Boston Fed is quoted in that, and there are some real structural capital problems with development funding. And because this project is so oversized, I believe it's a real risk, commercial risk, of leaving Brookline with a white elephant. So I will leave you a copy of the article. I urge you to look at it, and I urge the developers to propose something that puts the town at less risk and puts themselves at less risk in the financial climate that exists within housing financing today. The point I made last time when I was here is that this process is back-to-front. We're starting with a building, and we're saying we'll do the traffic afterwards. It can't work for this site. The problem with this site, first, is the traffic management. Then we can talk about the building. Now, Mr. Geller said that there had been some additional traffic studies, and it would be nice if he could be more specific about those, because that's why I'm here, I want to hear about those. And I think the town needs to signal to the developer that without traffic studies, we don't even want to talk about size of building, because that is really what's going to determine what goes on this site. And with respect to traffic studies, devotion school needs to be in full operation before those traffic studies can be done. So that's my feedback for you and for the developer today. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Sure. So, thank you, and we appreciate all those comments. I do, I do encourage everyone, though, to please participate in the process that we have with the zoning committee, because I do think that there's an opportunity to do something different on the site, and we're certainly committed to doing that. With regard to the traffic studies, you're absolutely right. Traffic study would be included in a ZBA filing, so there was a small piece of that in the project eligibility letter, but clearly, traffic is a big concern, both for us and for the town, and it, there is a significant amount of work that's already been done on that that will help us also with the work that we're doing with the committee. So there'll be more to come on that and a lot of more information.
And also the shadow stuff.
And the shadow stuff, too, obviously.
Part of that process.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? As I said at the beginning, we've sent in some preliminary comments, and the comments you've given to us, I think, kind of mirror what we've, what we've said. And I don't take the smaller turnout this time as a lack of community interest at all, given that, one, it's really, the community has really come out in force with the other process, and, two, this was put together pretty quickly, and I'm sure we didn't have quite the community outreach that we had for the first, for the first go-round. But to the extent that Ms. Steinfeld, we should emphasize, you know, the need to examine the traffic and the pedestrian patterns and make sure everything meets the safety requirements within 40B, we should, we already stated, but we should emphasize that many of the prior objections to the prior proposal were not addressed. You know, the financial feasibility, you know, 40B provides a construct that the subsidizing agency enforces, and, you know, they're going to have their own opinion based on however they analyze it, which may be different than what you have in the article. So, you know, we can comment on that, but, you know, it's not going to do any, you know, they have their own thing, you know? So I don't know what good would come out of that kind of, they'll just ignore that kind of, and we're not doing a financial analysis of a 40B pro forma, at least at this stage.
It's not within the purview of the municipality.
The comment on the housing on the street, at street level, let me just probe that a little bit. What did you like that you saw?
Exactly what, sorry.
Yeah, and that may help us in the other process, too.
Yeah, exactly what Mr. Geller said, that it was consistent with the rest of the street, that you have housing on the street rather than a wall.
Okay, so the, trying to keep John Street residential in character.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
One more comment.
Sure, by all means.
You know, I'm troubled by the number of cars that you've scheduled here. 333, I believe, is what I heard you say. And there are 299 units, so that's more than one car per unit in a building which you can practically spit on the tee. And if there's ever an opportunity to get people to use the tee and to make mass transit mean more in our environment, this is it. I just, I can't see 333 parking spaces for 299 units. That seems very excessive.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. So our vast TV audience can see you.
It may not be vast, but they do comment.
Liz Smith Shaw again. I think one of the things here is, the profile is lower and smaller than the last 22-story height proposal?
21.
21. But in no means does this one look like it's residential, you know? And as this gentleman said, it looks like, you know, some hat box or cake box on top of, you know, a table. It looks like, you know, an industrial building. It looks like, you know, an industrial building that's just gonna be twelve stories high instead of, you know, something more residential. And regarding parking, I think one of the things in Brookline is, there are people who do have cars. Um, and if you don't provide enough parking for residents in that building, they will go seek parking elsewhere, and there's a deficit of parking. You know, people rent parking from people who have parking and from other facilities. So, it's gonna, it's gonna be a problem, regardless of the T. And this lady over here mentioned that the T is quite maxed out. You know, the trains are sort of falling apart. So, so I think that there's really challenges for having something with this amount of population absorbing into this, um, into the existing environment. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Um, would you like to say? Sure, come on up.
I can't sit still anymore.
Then don't.
Jane Fearsham, Town Meeting Precinct Two. I live, um, across the street, uh, and up, um, on the corner of Brown and Pleasant. I walk down Pleasant Street every day. I was here at the last hearing. And just because it's only twelve stories, it is equally as terrible and a huge assault on the character of our neighborhood and our ability as a pedestrian-friendly community. It's still awful. I, someone else said that, and I would urge the Selectmen to review and try and do anything you can to look at all those comments that people said here last time. It, it is still horrible. Uh, I, I don't know. I can't, I just can't even stand it. Thank you.
Okay. I think our letter will have that sentiment.
It's so hard.
Um, okay, so I think we have our marching orders. Um, so the, we'll do what we did last week. Next week, we'll have a, a draft.
Do you want it next week or within two, in two weeks?
Well, whenever you can get to it.
Okay, well, I'll arrange it.
Right. Actually, you know, next week will be tough.
That's-
Because of the holiday, and so, yeah, so we'll shoot for the week after, and we, what's our deadline?
The deadline is the twenty-seventh, but I'd like to remind everyone, if you want to submit comments, do so in writing, send them to me. I'll make sure the Selectmen see them, but we'll attach them to the Selectmen's letter.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Uh, we have one last, well, no, we have a, still have a bunch of agenda items. Oh, gosh. We have a few. So, first is the Article sixteen solar lease for Runkel School. Hopefully, that'll be quick.
Yes, this'll be quick because you've seen this project come in front of you a few times now. Um, so, Article sixteen essentially is, um, asking for town meeting authorization, uh, to have, grant either a lease or an easement for the Runkel School, uh, roof in order to install solar on that property. Um, we had previously been operating under the premise that a license would be sufficient. Um, Blue Wave has now partnered with a new installer who feels that they would get better financial backing if we had, um, a lease or an easement, uh, instead of a license. So, uh, we need town, town meeting authorization in order to make that happen.
Are there any, we heard from bond counsel that there could potentially be issues if we have a commercial, uh, use-
In other words, private use of the building.
Yeah, so, um, any agreement right now? John Bukheit is working on the, um, the contract itself, and so we would run that by bond counsel before bringing it in front of the board.
Okay.
Wouldn't you wanna discuss with bond counsel first?
We, we're still negotiating with Blue Wave, so once we've kind of finalized that, um, we would also run it by bond counsel. This agreement has been something that's been vetted, uh, pretty substantially by the MIPC, and, um, there've been other communities that have been moving forward with similar terms. So, we would obviously make sure, um, that it's still passed the, the, you know, bond, bond counsel's approval process as well.
I, I guess my question is, was Runkel School financed with any outstanding, currently outstanding bonds?
Um, yeah.
Yes.
We do have some outstanding bonds, but they're also an MSVA project, so we would probably use the same mechanism that was described when we had our, our bond hearing.
So, so my concern is that, you know, because you have a private use of this building, that you, you have, at the beginning, a problem that, you know, you worked around, but you need to have, you know, tax counsel to give you the guide, you know, guidelines of how to do that.
Yep. Yeah, and, and before we ask the board to sign off on any agreement, we-
It may, it may be prudent, it may be prudent to touch base with them sooner rather than later.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Be, be a pity to go through all this stuff and then bond counsel at the end says, whoa.
It's been a years-long process, so, believe me. I, I, I'm very well aware of the, of the need to get it.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Does any member of the public wish to speak on this? Okay. Uh, any member of the board wish to comment on this? Seems pretty straightforward to me.
Um, if you wanna go into, uh, the votes for Warren articles, I can guide you through the-
Sure, anything to help us.
So, um, Article eleven, uh, the board previously reviewed, and you should have at your places or in your binders, um, the advisory committee vote, that they did tweak the language a little bit, um, so that should also be in your packet as well.
Tweaked it a little bit? A lot of tweaking on my-
Twelve.
So, I, I want you to know that I had some, um, long discussions with Neil Gordon, the petitioner, about this article, because I did, as I said I would, insulted my treasurer. Um, everybody else uses Neil Gordon, but I don't. So, had the opportunity, and she has done many, uh, she's done my school committee campaigns, but she's also been treasurer for a number of other organizations, both nonprofit and, you know, condo and things like that. And one of her overreaching comments was, you know, why is it that we need to file a separate form for the town from the state? Why couldn't, you know, maybe the town wants some supplemental information, and we could just attach a piece of paper to the, to the state form and submit it, uh, for the town? But most of the information is redundant, but it's, you know, put in different categories. It's a lot more work. It's gonna be a lot harder for people to recruit treasurers, um, when there is so much, you know, more, um, work involved. It's, this is, after all, not a very high-paid position. And, uh, you know, it, it is a little bit of a, so, I don't, I mean, I can't tell from this whether or not that comment has been adopted. I mean, Neil could see that that was a real issue, that we have a different form from, from the state, and so we're forcing people to fill out two different forms, which have the same information, but they're not, the information isn't in the same place. And then we do have some supplemental information in Brookline for the people who have to provide employer information for, for donors between fifty-one and a hun- two hundred dollars or something. So, I don't know. I, this doesn't feel simple to me, but I can't tell until I've really had an opportunity to, and we just got it tonight, so.
So, are you, is that a, a long way of saying, uh, you're not ready to vote on it? Well, it, it-
I think that's a good point.
What?
I think you can make a good point. And but, uh, in terms of, and we're not ready to vote on this, but also, I think, you know, some thoughts to be given to the, um, you know, provisions and, uh, bylaws that require these additional reporting. And, you know, whether it really adds anything of value. Um, I don't know, maybe it does, but-
So, the additional reporting, it requires, uh, reporting at a different time than the state does.
Right.
So, that's-
But if you had the same form, you know, basically-
It practically, I mean, I was campaign treasurer for a little while. It practically is the same form. In fact, it is, is the same form, with just some stuff crossed out at the top and a different, uh, different seal and a different name. The changes were, the differences between the state requirement and the Brookline-specific requirement were, um, different time period you're reporting on. Uh, but also, it remained to, um, to require, to provide more detailed information about donations-
Right.
-above a certain level. So, this proposed bylaw doesn't address the additional report being submitted. What it does do is, um, brings into line the Brookline-specific reporting with what the state requires. So, maybe we get halfway to what your concerns are.
Well, I, I think the, the issue in terms of that is, you know, I remember when we adopted this years ago, the issue was, uh, you know, people are gonna split their contributions up, and it may be that candidates, especially for Selectmen, because we sign the contracts, are going to have, uh, be accepting donations from, uh, you know, allowing, uh, people who have interest in those contracts to give us more money without disclosing who it is. That's really the issue, and, you know-
It happens.
It does happen.
Even with the, um, reporting.
Forty-nine dollars, that's where, that's the threshold, so you're gonna be-
Now, but this, I think, we're-
Well, this doesn't affect that, or does it?
So, what, what, anything below fifty dollars, and this is a little bit based on recollection, so somebody's gonna have to check me, uh, is not reportable either by name or occupation. You sort of, uh-
You just lump them together.
You lump them altogether. So, you can have two hundred dollars, uh, that you've received from, you know, eight or more people, um, and there's, you don't know who that, that two hundred dollars came from. Uh, the other thing that, that this bylaw will change is, I believe, any donation, um, of less than two hundred dollars would not, you'd not be required to, um, to submit, uh, or to provide-
Application, yeah.
-application information. You would, however, be required to-
Name.
-submit name.
Yeah.
So, any donation between fifty dollars-
But not in the form of, so-
Fifty dollars and two hundred dollars, you would get a name, not an occupation. Any donation above two hundred dollars, you would get both a name and an occupation. And that's, again, to your earlier point, Selectman Heller, that's in line with what the state requires.
I understand.
Yep.
So, are, it's getting late. You wanna hold it?
Yeah.
Okay. Seventeen, this one shouldn't be controversial.
So, seventeen, uh, you heard last week from DPW on this one, and the advisory committee voted for the black.
Any discussion?
It's fine.
It's acceptance of an easement.
I had held this last time, so I'm the guilty party.
Why you hold it?
You asked a good question, which I don't have an answer to.
Okay, so I will move a favorable action recommendation on Article seventeen. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Are we done? Okay.
Great.
That concludes our business.